Okay, guys, we're ready to go. We're back. I see that we still have quorum. So I have a motion from Counselor Wink noting that a quorum is present. The committee of the whole meeting of February 4th, 2019, which presently stands in recess, be now reconvened to assume the balance of the agenda. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries. So now we hand it over to that public works.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The last project we were discussing was Roads 0819. So our staff will resume from there.
So we ask Mr. Jason Marr to continue his presentation.
Good evening, council. So I think where we left off with the capital budget was discussing some of the roads projects. Specifically, I think the last project we ended on was the Pelham Street North project. So I'll just give you a brief summary of that again, where we left off. So this is a section of road from Burton Street down to Short Hills Place. The road is in need of upgrades. There's several deficiencies with it. Of importance to note is that the storm sewer. Well, there is no storm sewer. It's using swales on the edge of the road. The roadway is experiencing some severe flooding. And there's also been a recent issue with traffic speeding on this section of road as well. So there's some safety concerns. I think where we left off last time is I kind of went through the scope of the project. It does involve a full urbanization from Burton Street down to Short Hills Place. It includes new storm sewer work when we do the urbanization. We eliminate the roadside ditches and put in proper storm sewers, which would help alleviate some of the flooding issues. As well, we looked at some traffic calming measures that we would, the town would look at putting in place with respect to the issues that we've received and concerns that we've heard regarding traffic speeding. It was discussed last meeting that some of these traffic measures, traffic calming measures that we would look at implementing would be something they call road dieting. So bringing the curbs from a nine-meter platform into a seven-meter-wide platform in certain areas to try to reduce the speed of traffic. Traffic does tend to slow down when these techniques are used. At that point, I think it was discussed that council would like to see staff looking at maybe a three-way stop at the intersection of Hurricane and Pelham Road. So that message was received by staff, and we will look into that as part of this design as well. The design is complete. Not only does it include storm sewer, urbanization, which would be new curb sidewalks, it also includes new water main. And I think I mentioned last meeting that the water main component, because it's been identified as one of the critical pieces of infrastructure we need to take care of as part of our drinking water quality management system, I've pulled that piece out of this project because this project does rely on receiving funding. So it's a $2.4 million project. We're looking at getting funding of $1.25 million. That's the grant that we're submitting. And the water main component, just to let you know, is about $250,000. So it's a fairly small component of the work. That's why that's, because it's critical and we're getting a lot of breaks on that section of water main, we pulled that section of water main work out and would put that forward as part of our water budget for consideration moving forward in 2019, regardless of whether we receive this funding or not, to move ahead with the whole project.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
The picture you have, is that on South Pelham and Hurricane, the north of Hurricane?
Yeah, so this picture...
That's where the townhomes are.
This picture here, or the one...
Yeah, the one on the bottom.
The one on the bottom where the flag is? It's the carriage house. I believe it's the carriage house on Pelham. So it's on the, it's on the north, right? It's on the northeast side of Pelham, just past the intersection of Hurricane, yeah.
So that's basically down Hurricane Road.
The roadway section would be over here.
Yeah, okay.
And this is up against the foundation of the building.
Yeah, we do have a lot, through you, Mr. Mayor, we do have a lot of complaints about that.
Yes, I've received those as well, those emails. So we're aware of the issues and definitely, definitely the improvements that we make as part of the urbanization would help solve those drainage issues.
So that project has been, one of the ones that has been deferred quite a while. Did you know that, Jason? I almost remember talking about that back in 2017.
Yes, that's correct. Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, absolutely. The project has been on the books for several years now, and it is deferred, keeps getting deferred because of the, well, A, the value of the project and our funding that's required to move forward with this project.
And if I may ask one more, when would we know about the funding? Have we re-applied for it? Or do you just apply once? Or how does that, oh, the CIO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We have applied for the funding. It's the OSIF top-up grant, and normally we would hear from them at the end of January, but because the grant announcements are delayed this year from the new government, we're hoping to find out any day.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Any other questions on this project? Nope, that's, thank you.
I think I just want to also add to that, that this project is moving forward as contingent upon receiving the funding, but we have to have it included as part of our capital budget in order to apply for that grant, to receive that grant.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So it's going to cost the city or the township of Pelham $1.1 million?
Correct.
Okay.
And just to be clear, this budget of $2.44 million was reduced by $250,000 because of the water main work, pulling that out separate. So if we did receive funding to do this project, we would move this project ahead as one complete project, where we did water, storm sewer, and urbanization all as one project.
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If we get the funding, does that mean the funding only applies to the year of 2019?
No, through you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's, we have a two-year window with that funding, so we have some time.
Counselor Carr.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. If we don't get the funding, are we still going to move forward with this project? The grant?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we'll scratch it? If we don't get the $1.2 million, we won't move forward with it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. What's council's decision? I mean, you have to prioritize your projects, so if you think this is the top project, then other ones have to come off the list. So it's not a, so it's council's decision.
Okay, yep, thank you.
Oh, but, sorry, but we have to show it on the list. It has to be on the capital list in order for us to put the grant submission in. They want to see it on your capital list, so that's why it's on there.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Go ahead, Jason. I think we're good.
So there's a few other capital programs that we have on the roads budget. One is the roadside ditching program. This is an annual program that we have in our capital program every year, $100,000. Usually we try to get around 17 kilometers done per year. As prices increase, this amount of $100,000 has been consistent for the last, I don't know how long, but the amount of work we can get done actually with that $100,000 is starting to decrease. I think we're down around 13, we get around 13, 14 kilometers now per tender, so, but this is an annual amount that we've been putting in our capital budgets to do roadside ditching work.
So, Jason, I've got a question. I shouldn't be calling you Jason, I'm sorry, Director of Public Works. So I live out in the country, and I know that this is going to be a difficult budget to get down, that everyone can be acceptable and can at least live with it. So, and I see you, we have, Mr. Cook here also. So I proposing that for one year only, if we were to drop this out of the budget and save the $100,000, do you, would either of you gentlemen see any great consequence because of that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to defer this question to my manager of Public Works for comment.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, I think we could probably defer this to her without causing too much trouble. We do do a number of small drainage projects in-house, so if there is an area that needs to get done immediately, then we could probably take that on.
Thank you. I'll hug you after the meeting. Thank you for that. Any other questions on this?
Counselor Carr.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, but we only spent $38,000 last year on that, so we're going to take that out. So in two years, we're only going to spend $38,000 on the roadside program?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I know we didn't use, fully utilize the program prior to the end of the year last year. I do know there are some areas to be completed as part of that program. They were waiting actually for frost to set in so that they could effectively ditch those areas. With the winter we've had and the snow we've had, it's now pushed them off, so we're planning on trying to get them back in in the spring to carry out some of that additional ditching. But yes, you're correct, so that program was underspent last year.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, one more question. So that program on Station Street on the west side, is that, is that a form of, part of the program? Because I know there's a, there's a water problem on College Street and Station, and it looks like we haven't really cleared the ditching area there or the water flow. Or is that going to be a part of the Station Street construction?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just look at my manager of Public Works. I'm going to say that the ditching is mostly in rural areas. My guess is that the ditching would be, once we do Station Street reconstruction, there's, there will be no more roadside ditches. So the road will be urbanized, and when we do that, we put in new storm sewer, concrete curbs, so there won't be a requirement to have roadside ditches in there. Again, through you, Mr. Mayor, if there is some ditching work that needs to be completed there, then our operations crews can have a look at that and tackle that as well.
And through you, Mr. Mayor. How many more ditches programs do we have in the inner city? High Station Street, Hurricane Road, is that a part of?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, there's a number of roads in the municipality that do have ditches, even in the urban areas. They're referred to as a semi-urban cross-section, which would have shallow ditches to take care of roadside drainage. And that's a common practice as well to have in semi-urban areas. And it's, obviously, there's a maintenance requirement associated with that to clear the ditches, but yeah, that's not uncommon to have in municipalities, smaller municipality.
Any other questions? I guess we can proceed.
Okay. The next project is a stormwater facility maintenance project. So we have a number of stormwater maintenance ponds in the town, and some of those have been assumed by the town. Some of those are still under the ownership of the developer. We haven't done a very good job on maintaining those stormwater management ponds, and to be honest with you, at this point in time, we would like to move forward with, this is a study, an investigation, an inspection of those ponds to get a good handle on what our requirements are under legislation and what works we need to do to maintain and upkeep these ponds. So this isn't actually to do any physical work on the stormwater management ponds, it's to get a good inventory of what we have in-house and be able to develop a plan to move forward with the rehabilitation and maintenance of those ponds.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Counselor Hahn?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So if you're not doing any work and it's being done in-house, why is it $30,000?
The estimate that, through you, Mr. Mayor, the estimate that's been provided will be to do any investigations and inspection work and come up with a detailed report on rehabilitation strategies. At this point in time, we don't know what the value of that assignment would be, whereas estimating it to be in the order of $30,000.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Would that pond that's on Welland Road and Balfour be part of that? Seems to be having issues with that one there right now. Is that part of the investigation?
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor.
We haven't assumed that pond yet. It's still under development. It's not yet currently our responsibility.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's not part of the budget, but there is a major issue with that one, so before we assume responsibility, we need to make sure it's working 100%.
I believe that's just a temporary pond.
It's a temporary pond.
Yeah, they're going to move it.
Sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. This is the pond at Balfour and Welland, right?
Yeah, the construction where the new houses are.
Yeah, it's just north of the, of Welland.
Correct.
And I know, I have received complaints regarding that pond silting up and overflowing and drainage issues associated with that, so we are aware of it.
Okay, it's going into the backyards of the homes on Balfour.
Yes. So we're aware of that issue as well. We can follow up with the developer on that. I know, through you, Mr. Mayor, we have followed up with the developer on that as well already, so we'll make sure that we contact them to have proper maintenance on that pond during construction.
Sorry, through you again. I know it's not part of budget, and I apologize for that. Can we put a timeline on that? If you can follow through the developer and give them some kind of time restraints to when to have that completed?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. So I will, I will follow up. I'll have a report back to council next meeting if you'd like.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions on stormwater ponds? Thank you. Director?
Okay, next project is the streetlights and traffic signal maintenance. So this is an annual program, $55,000. This is, the region basically maintains and operates our traffic signals, and this is a fund that's set aside to deal with any maintenance issues that come up during the course of the year, that are billed to us by the region.
Thank you.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. So last year, we only spent $5,183, so why are we budgeting $55,000 if we're only spending that much?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I, sorry, I don't have that report in front of me with those costs. I do know that, again, there was invoices that we hadn't received by the end of the year, so by the time that report was drafted, so there are additional costs that are coming in through from the region for that program.
Thank you.
Very good. Oh, sorry. Counselor Hahn?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. In addition to that, and it's a little bit, little bit off topic, but still, it's about, have we ever looked at syncing up the lights to help with traffic flow in major peak times in and out of the, like on Highway 20, coming in and out of town? Because that would be something that if you're saying the region then is responsible for the maintenance, and they're charging us in theory 50 or 5,000, perhaps then there's an opportunity to do some sort of study or look into that? Is that something we've ever done? Or could we do?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We can discuss that with the region, the timing of the signals. I know they do, they do manage that for us. They manage the signals. So we definitely can speak to the region on different timings that would help relieve traffic congestion on Highway 20.
Yeah, just at peak periods, I'm thinking like going out of town in the morning, coming back in the night. Thanks.
Thank you.
Moving on, the road rehabilitation project. I believe we spoke about this last meeting. This is our resurfacing program. It's a mix of surface treat, treatment options as well as hot-mix asphalt. So like I said last meeting, this is a list that's been put together, preliminary list for the budgeting purposes. We've ran with $400,000 the last several years as part of the capital budget. We tend to do that the same. So these are only placeholders right now. There could be other projects that come forward that would be, that would take more of a priority. That'll be part of that.
And I believe we discussed that, because I don't think it's listed here, Welland Road, what is that, east of Hay Street? That stretch in there that's been bad for the last two or three years, but we touched on that before, because you were, the reason it hadn't been done was about a water main, but you were confident that even though it was undersized, that we could live with that, so we could do that resurfacing. Is that right?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, that's correct. There is a section of sanitary sewer that needs to be upsized to support future developments. When Hay Street was reconstructed, the sanitary sewer was upsized, and actually, there's a section between Haste, the intersection of Haste and Welland that comes up, and I can show it on a slide I have a little bit further in the presentation, I'll make sure I point it out, but there's a short piece that runs along Welland Road and that comes up between two properties up to Deer Park. And from Deer Park on to Pelham, it's all 450 millimeter, 450 millimeter down Haste. So there's a section of 350 millimeter in that short piece. Now, we looked with the proposed development coming online at the 1120 Hay Street property, we ran our sanitary sewer model and determined that with that development coming online, that the sewer size, the way it exists now, is suitable to support that development. So at this point in time, because that project is very, it's a very difficult project to undertake. It involves trenchless technologies because you're working between two homes with a fairly deep sewer. It does become an expensive project. So my recommendation would be to surface that section of Welland Road now and defer that project of upsizing that sewer work into the future.
Great, thank you. Any questions on, Counselor Carr?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. So we have a grant here for $183,000. Where's that grant coming from? I'm sorry.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. It's the OSIF grant. There's the name of the grant there.
Just being new at that, so is that Ontario provincial?
Ontario, the Community Infrastructure Grant.
Okay. Now, would that project move forward if we didn't get that grant?
That's a grant, that's an annual grant that we received, so we aren't getting that grant.
It's a guaranteed?
Yes, yes. It's probably, it's like a base grant.
Okay, yeah, Director, yes.
Our next project is the Main Street Revitalization Initiative. So this is also a grant that we've received. We've already received the funds, and this is a, this is a grant that we've received that we don't have to contribute to, we don't have to match in any way. So basically, we need to come up with a project that's going to work to revitalize downtown business areas. So at this point in time, in our previous capital budgets, one of the budget lines has been upgrading and replacing deficient Christmas lights that we use to put up during the holiday season. That, in order to try to make this budget as efficient as possible, that line in was deleted this year. So the thoughts were for this, this funding is that we would use that to upgrade any Christmas lights this year that we would need to do on an annual basis, as well as propose, there's been a need for some type of bike locker in the downtown area. So the project's not well-defined yet, but it's, there's some concepts that we discussed on how we could, how we could use that funding.
Counselor Hahn?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So would our, would our arches be eligible for this? The elimination and of the arches and, I don't know, proposing something else that would be more attractive and safe?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. This is something that we could definitely look into. Staff could look into this and report back to council on that.
Okay, excellent. Counselor Choffey?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. So this funding, or this $52,072 is 100% of a grant, correct? There's no cost to the town?
That's correct.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, that's correct.
Okay, and if we're going to put this like towards the downtown, would that be split between Pelham, Ridgeville, Fenwick, and North Pelham? Could that be incorporated into there?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, through you, that, this grant is only in the community improvement plan areas, so it would only qualify in the downtown of Pelham and downtown Fenwick.
Okay, thank you.
Or Fount, pardon me, downtown Fountail and Fenwick.
Yes.
Good.
Any other questions on this side? Okay. Good, Director?
Okay. The last project that's on the roads capital budget for 2019 is Sulfur Springs Drive Repair. So this is a, this is a project, Sulfur Springs Drive. It's off of Effingham Road. There are two areas that have failed on the roadway itself. The road has been closed to traffic since June of 2016. The first site is approximately 200 meters downstream of Lufman Drive, and the second site is about 200 meters upstream of Orchard Hill Drive. The Site 1 is the picture in the top right, and that's, that's experienced a complete road failure due to erosion. So the water velocities are very high in this. It's a cold stream water, water course, so, and the velocities get very high through this section, especially on this, on this part of the road. And what we've experienced is, once you have erosion of, once you start eroding the toe of that bank, you have slope instabilities and we ended up losing the entire road. So I don't know exactly when this picture was taken. I know my first, I think my first day, I had a tour of this site, and it is unpassable right now with the vehicle. So road's been, the road's been closed off. It's not passable. The second site, which is the picture showing in the bottom right, it's hard to see from this, from this slide, wait, shows on the screen, but there's a section of gabion baskets that are along the edge of the roadway here, and they've completely failed. So this roadway is still passable. Public Works staff has barrels out that are kind of keeping traffic from that edge of roadway, but due to high velocities in the water, in the water course, we're concerned that we will have a complete roadside failure there as well. Both sites, the Site 1, so that's a site closer to, off Lufman Drive, there's one house that has access into that property right now, or on that section of road. Site 2, if that was to go, we would lose access to four homes in between, in between the area where we have the failure and those entrances to those properties. So we, staff feel that we have a responsibility to keep this roadway open to those residents. We did hire an engineering firm, Waters Edge, and they are currently in the final phases of completing a feasibility study, which looked at the causes of failure. It also looked at possible solutions, and they looked at a number of different options. One is even keeping the road closed, bringing, bringing that roadway back to a private laneway for them to maintain. One of the issues here is that we're working in protected land, so the lands are protected by the Niagara Skarmer Commission as well as the Niagara Peninsula Conservation Authority. So we have protected lands, we have, we have a cold water stream with fish habitat that we need to look at protecting, and that will kind of, as we work through the process, that'll kind of dictate where we go with the repairs. I think the most economical approach to a repair here would be to use, if we were able to, to use an armor stone type retaining wall in the high-velocity areas. This may not be the most preferred option by the NPCA, and would probably more like to see some type of mechanically, sorry, not mechanically stabilized, vegetated stabil... a vegetated stabilized slope to reinstate, reinstate the roadways. One of the challenges that we're facing is that, once we get outside of our existing right of way, then you're into the issues with the Niagara Skarmit Commission and the NPCA with respect to the protected land. So we want to try to stay within that roadway right of way as much as we can. So we're looking to get that report completed by Waters Edge and and come back with some design options for us and and work, work with the NPCA as well as the Niagara Skarmit Commission to come up with a preferred solution. At this point in time, we haven't decided on a permanent solution yet, and we're working towards that. But the project budget here, from their, from their engineering report, to fix both sites with an armor stone retaining wall, which is probably the most expensive option, they were around two hundred thousand. So we've allowed for a little bit of a contingency here with the two hundred fifty thousand, which would also include the engineering inspection work that needs to take place during construction.
So if I may say, number one, I curse you Red Baron for going to outside engineering firm as opposed to an RFP. That's fine. I I can't, I think maybe it, because that is, like you said, a cold stream waterway. I find that maybe the right solution wouldn't, would have been for the engineering firm that you do have. Instead of putting something forth and then trying to get the NCPA and NEC, I'm, I'm wondering, I can't believe that they didn't bring everybody in a room and say, okay, this is, I guess you're gonna do that eventually. They're gonna come up with a proposal, and I believe, even if it's not on their land, won't we have to be in conjoin, in conjunction with the NPCA? Like, can they, if we, let's say this armor stones, if they don't like that, do they have the power to say, sorry, we want it done this way?
Okay, so through you, Mr. Mayor. I wasn't, I wasn't around, so I can't really comment on the procurement process for the engineering firm. At this point in time, I I can get that answer back to you.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how that, how that worked out, to be quite honest.
And the road, if I, just before I go to the rest of the council, it has been closed, what, it's two years now?
Twenty sixteen, June of twenty sixteen.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, my experience in dealing with projects like such as this with the NPCA and the Niagara Skarmit Commission is, you would, you would develop your concepts, you would, you would be discussing those with the NPCA as you, as you develop those concepts. I can't tell you exactly how much involvement they have had, but I know they have had involvement. I know they visited the site. So I know they are aware of of some of the remediation measures that we're looking at implementing. As a structural engineer, I'm always saying, let's do the hard approach, which would be an armor stone retaining wall. It would probably allow you to build that road within that road right of way and provide probably supreme erosion protection at the toe of the slope. Because what happens is, if you do not protect the toe of the slope, and you start washing away the toe, and that's when you get the slides. So my experience with the NPCA on a lot of those measures is, that's not fish habitat friendly. So in the past, we've had to do a lot of different type of remediation measures that would be more fish, fish friendly, I can say that. And we have used soil stabilized slopes before, and even using some type of round river stone at the toe of the slope to try to protect the erosion of that toe while also providing a fish habitat friendly environment. So to answer your question, there, I know there has been conversations with the NPCA and the Niagara Skarmit Commission. I'm not sure what extent that has taken place. And until we can come up with a preferred solution going forward from our end, that's when we'll sit down with them and start going through the the fine details of the design.
Thank you. Councilor Trophy?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. So we're saying approximately two hundred and fifty thousand can get this road opened again, both sections for these people?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. That's the, that's the engineer's estimate.
Sorry, through you again, Mr. Mayor. Right now, we're, the road is blocked and it's affecting four homes. Let's say two in one moment, Site One. How do these people get their garbage out? A garbage truck can't make it down there, that's for sure. Is that affecting anything? Since twenty sixteen, how are they getting their garbage picked up?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the first site, which is one hundred or a couple hundred meters downstream of Lufman, the residential property is located on, let's say, the upstream, I guess, side of of that, of that failure. So there is access to the property right now from Lufman Drive. To answer your question, I'm not sure how the garbage collection is actually taking place there. I know on the, on the four residents that would be affected if we lost this section of road. As of right now, we're still maintaining access through there. So again, I don't know what the strategies are for the region to to do their waste collection. I do know if we decide to permanently close the road, then we will need to, we will need to make some provisions so that we have turnarounds, proper turnarounds or bulbs for both garbage and emergency services so that they can get turned around and have access to the, to the, to the properties. My guess is right now that they're using driveways to back up and turn around.
I can answer that, Counselor. So what they do, the people that are farthest down the road, bring their garbage back up to the first, I mean, you would know the name of that road.
Orchard Hill?
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, so you're up, that's exactly what they do, Director, is they bring their garbage up by that side road, and then the dump truck can turn around in the road and head back the other way. So they, although obviously a inconvenience for them, but they have been doing that for the last two, three years.
Wow, I commend them.
Uh, yes, Councilman?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I cycle through there all the time in the summertime. It's hard for me to believe we've got enough road surface to put any armor stone or anything. There, there virtually is no side of the road, and it's a single, it's almost like a single lane. So I'm not sure how this engineering firm is coming up with a solution. Having enough room and not imposing on other people's land. It's just, it amazes me, because that path is so slim.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at their feasibility study, their initial report. It is a very limited right of way. The armor stone revetment does provide you the most working platform. Obviously, with a mechanically stabilized slope, that's when you have to start meeting your two to one, three to one slopes. And if we do need to implement a strategy like that, there could be a situation where we start to impact private lands. One option, and which is an option they looked at, is if we do use a mechan, or sorry, a vegetated stabilized slope with erosion protection at the toe, that we would, there's a possibility to bring that roadway down to a one lane road. It's a very, it's a very narrow road, two-way road now to begin with. So one of the options would be if you weren't able to go through and and secure that land to do, to widen the road with the new slope, then there would be an option to, you could look at as putting it as a one-way road as well. This is one of the options they looked, they've also looked at. My personal opinion and preference would be to put a rivers, or an armor stone revetment in so that we could utilize, put a, reinstate a two-lane road back in the existing right of way. And based on their initial feasibility study and the the cross-sections that they provided, we can fit that within our right of way if we, if we use a method like that.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. When you mentioned fish habitat, just came to mind. Have we looked into grants and such with, and I know there's names for these organizations, but fish, the fish folks. The fish habitat, this and that, the folks that, you know, protect our, our fish and streams, et cetera, et cetera. Considering the amount of additional money that may have to be spent, et cetera, would there be any option to apply for a grant or something along those lines? Have we looked into that?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not aware of any grants that would be available to us for that. Obviously, it's, it's a good point, and something that we can look into for sure to help fund, fund this project. But today, I don't think there has been any, we haven't looked into any grants that would help us out in that respect.
Oh, my Councilor Corr?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, or to the Treasurer. The federal grant gas tax, that's, I'm looking at zero one nineteen for four hundred thousand and the one we're talking about fourteen nineteen for a hundred nineteen thousand. So those are guaranteed grants?
Yes, they are. Yes, the gas tax are.
So the four hundred thousand is guaranteed in one nineteen. Okay, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Jason, your priority from zero one nineteen to fourteen nineteen, which ones do you think we need to get done as soon as possible?
So through you, Mr. Mayor. The annual programs that we do, the resurfacing programs, they're, they're, they're critical, as far as I'm concerned. A lot of our roadways, especially after winter such as this, are, we're gonna experience a lot of deterioration and degradation on those surfaces. So obviously, some of those annual programs, such as the the road rehabilitation program, would be, would be key. Also, the road-based surface repair program. We tender these two projects together, so the, the road base and surface repair program and the road rehabilitation program, that'll be one tender, that'll go out to hot mix and surface treatment contractors. So I, I think that's one, one project that's very important. Obviously, Poth Street, the replacement of that culvert is a, is a very important piece of work that needs to be completed. The roadway's been closed now for several years, and there's a lot of pressure on, on everyone to to try to get that opened again. So that's, that, I think that would be a priority project as well. Again, same with Sulfur Springs Road. We do have a roadway that's currently out, and we're, we're in danger of losing a section of the road, and if we do, then we're gonna, we're gonna isolate several properties from access. So and then we'll be in an emergency situation where we need to to get in and do that work. So again, that would be a project that I would think would be a priority. Outside of that, I I do think North Palom Street is, is a critical project that we need to address. I know I've heard from some of you councilors with regards to some concerns from residents and, and when we saw the pictures with the drainage issues. I do understand, I, I've been getting concerns from residents as well regarding the, regarding speeding on that road and 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 traffic volumes are increasing. So again, I think that's, that's a project that, that needs to, we need to take a good look at whether or not it's part of this capital project or whether we, we look at doing that next year. But I think it's something that needs to be looked at fairly soon. One thing, I always like to have shovel-ready projects that are ready to go, right? So the North Palom Street is a project that the design is, is complete. So we have the design complete. Through you, Mr. Mayor, with respect to some minor changes that may take place regarding intersections, that type of stuff. We can, we can make modifications like that, but for the most part, the work is designed, so that's shovel-ready, ready to go.
Counselor Trophy?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. So as you're going through that list, there, it seems to me that the culvert replacement on Poth Street is a no-brainer because it's a four hundred thousand budget, and then we're gonna be receiving four hundred thousand dollars in the federal gas tax, correct? So that breaks, so the Sulfur Springs, two hundred and fifty thousand, you have budget for that, and a hundred nineteen thousand will be from the federal gas tax. Right? And those two, I believe that are, you know, serious for emergency getting down there. Garbage collection, they hear saying these people are hauling it up. Fire trucks need to get in, ambulances. So those two need to be a priority. And then we can still incorporate some of the, the other ones that are on the list.
Any other comments?
Yes, to you, Mr. Mayor. I just hope we don't see zero nineteen and fourteen nineteen next year at our budget meetings. And I wish we could just take them off our books and and make sure that we could satisfy the citizens that live off those two streets, and that we, we should not see them again.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Good, Mr. Director.
Okay, we're on to Schedule Sixteen, the fleet. So Town of Palom Fleet maintains vehicles and equipment to support our building department, fire and bylaw services, our public works, which includes engineering, water, wastewater, roads, beautification, and facilities, and also supplies vehicles for the culture and wellness and administrative services. There's approximately eighty-two items in the fleet, and, you know, I just threw this in here. And this was part of my presentation and orientation as well. We maintain our fleet with one technician who completes or coordinates repairs and preventive maintenance on those, on those pieces of equipment. The, I don't have a detailed breakdown with me with respect to what types of vehicles, but you can see in this summary, it gives you kind of an idea what the numbers of, what numbers for fleet we have for the different departments. Fire services, a lot of that's heavy equipment, big trucks. Obviously, the roads, we, we maintain, operate six plows of our own, of our own fleet, as well as some service trucks, some one-ton trucks as well. The rest of the, the rest of the equipment are smaller, smaller vehicles that we use. Building department, the inspectors have their own vehicles. Engineering has two vehicles. We have an SUV and a, and a small pickup to take to sites. And facilities, obviously, they have their, their vehicles as well. One thing I will bring up. This is the first time that I've, first winter that I've gone through for, on an operation side of things with respect to winter maintenance. And I can tell you for certain that we haven't had one snow event where we've had all our fleet operational. So one of our plows is almost twenty years old now. And it's, it's getting very, very difficult for us to be able to keep that piece of equipment on the road. Seems like every time it, we get it repaired, to go back out, something else happens to it. So we're starting to spend, I don't have the numbers in front of me. We are spending, starting to spend a lot of money on maintaining these types of equipment. The one plow combo spreader unit was, I think, estimated about four hundred fifty thousand dollars. So that was, that was in the twenty nineteen capital budget this year. But through discussions with, with our manager of public works, you know, we, we deferred that for, into a future year. Hopefully, well, we're going to be putting it forward as part of the twenty twenty capital budget to replace that, that unit. Our guys are working with, with equipment that's, a lot of it's outdated, so we're, we're trying to make, do with what we've got and experiencing a lot of, a lot of downtime, especially with that, with that one particular unit.
Any comments on the fleets? How many trucks, if I may ask, do we lease? Like, we lease snowplows, don't we?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna defer that to my manager, Public Works.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We don't lease any snowplow trucks currently. We, we lease one heavy-duty landscape vehicle and two small SUVs. And then we do have a winter rental of a couple of tractors that we use for snowplows.
Okay, so those are, the, the snowplows then, that we have six of, so we own all those snowplows?
We do.
Oh, okay. And and the oldest one is is twenty. Can you give us a rundown on the, give us the bad news on the rest of them?
The second oldest truck in the fleet is, was purchased in two thousand eight for the two thousand eight, two thousand nine winter season. That is the second oldest vehicle. It's currently down with a starter issue. It, it's starting to show its age as well. And then we pretty much bought the remaining four trucks in succession after that. So we have two tandems and and two single axles that are eight, seven, eight, six years old.
And even if, if you lived in a perfect world, even the, even the eight, you, you'd be thinking of moving that down the road, wouldn't you?
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. The, the typical lifespan of a combo snowplow in most municipalities is about ten years. Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor, yes. The, the typical lifespan of a combo snowplow in most municipalities is about ten years.
Okay. Great. Thank you for that. Thank you. Uh, yes, Counselor Harell, Ben.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. This is my comment in, in general. Number one, in industry, twenty years ago, we dropped all personal vehicles, from the president down. No more personal vehicles and, because we couldn't justify it. I'm not sure whether municipalities have a justification. Because when we went to site, if it's local, you drove your own car. That was from the president down. No one had a personal vehicle. That's the number one question. And on the lease part, do you have a justification for rental versus purchase, or are we just doing that because we don't have cash?
So through you, Mr. Mayor, it was last year's decision was to do more of the rental, of the leasing because of the cash situation.
Do you have an answer with regards to personal vehicle usage?
No, I don't know. No, I don't. I think right now, the staff that are using the vehicles, they're going out to job sites, and I know that some of the job sites they do go to require more of a truck-type vehicle. I don't know if anyone else can answer the question of this. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. I've been in the municipal side for a number of years now. Actually, was part of a study that looked at basically company-supplied vehicle versus a private vehicle. When you, when you start supplying your own personal vehicle for business, there's a number of issues that come into play, and one is, I mean, there's still the expense for, for mileage and maintenance on that vehicle, right? So that's all, that's usually all done through mileage reimbursements. When we did our study, and these are, these are, these were positions that did a lot of driving for work, they were regional inspectors. And it was found to almost be a break-even. And so I know at the region for inspection, they, they tend to use their own vehicles for that. And then submit mileage reimbursements through the, through the municipality. I think there's also positions that you want to have town branding associated with that. So for instance, your building inspectors. Your, your supervisors, the, the people doing your road patrols, that type of thing, I think it's very important to have municipality branding associated with that. Obviously, fire services, you'd, you'd want that branding, bylaw services, you'd want that branding. You wouldn't want to be driving your personal vehicle, doing those types of, that types of work. From an, from an engineering and inspection perspective, you know, you could, you could look at using personal vehicles and, and reimbursing mileage. You know, a lot of our projects, you know, they're not really hard on vehicles, but on construction sites, it's, it's, you know, I used to park a kilometer down the road and then walk to the site, right? Because you don't want to be driving personal vehicles onto construction sites and that type of thing, so. I think, I think there's a, there's a case to, obviously, from a municipality's perspective, that you want to have that branding and you, you want to supply that service for your employees because A, some of these, some of these sites are difficult on their personal vehicles. And B, you want to have that, the face of the municipality out. Front, so. Just, just my.
Go ahead, one more time, one more question.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I just thought it would be an easy way of when we don't have cash to save cash. Because obviously, you're gonna go and buy something with this forty thousand dollars.
Okay. Maybe something I'll look at. Counselor Harell, wait.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. When we do the purchasing of these vehicles, do we go through the region to get their fleet pricing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll refer this back to the.
I think we do. I, I can get back to on that.
Please.
Yes. And I'm trying to decide something. With regards to, like, for example, the building inspector vehicle, that is funded through the building fund, the building reserve, so it's sort of whatever revenue is collected from the building permits, it funds the actual department, so it's a little bit separate from the, the tax levy.
Counselor Stewart. Oh, I'm sorry. Were you done?
No, actually, Ryan had one, had a question too.
No, as far as branding, like the town logos, those are like vinyl stick-ons, but they could also be applied to a magnet, a magnet that a town employee could just put it on their own car to use rather than, you know, and it would have the branding.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, that's, that's, that's an option. Definitely. I, in my personal opinion, I think it's important to have a fleet of vehicles that represents the municipality you're working for, so. I mean, I, it's an option, something that we could look into, but. Through you, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll...
Well, I think we got one more, two more questions.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The oh-five-nineteen, how old is the vehicle and how many miles does it have?
Okay, so, through you, Mr. Mayor, I was gonna step through this line by line. If you've got, I can, I can jump around, that's fine. So oh-five-nineteen is the building inspector vehicle? Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna, I'm gonna refer to my manager of public works and fleet for that.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the, the building department vehicles.
A dozen and eight.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's about an eleven-year-old Ford Ranger with a hundred and forty thousand kilometers. It is also currently under repair at the moment. It's not operating.
Through you. Mr. Mayor, could we go one more year without it? Or to, one more year, if we spend a thousand dollars, could we, and save thirty-nine thousand?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll refer that to the.
Through you. That vehicle is purchased as the treasure indicated through the building reserve fund, so it isn't something that is actually part of the, the tax levy. That vehicle, vehicle is in pretty, pretty tough shape. And, yeah, it's, it's on its last legs.
And it's important to notice, note, as you have, that the, the building department funds itself. So even if we took, put off the purchase of this truck, it's not going to affect the, the tax levy at all.
And also, it was deferred from last year. It was on last year's books and we deferred it another year.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? Just proceed then?
So I think we already touched on a bunch of these items and projects through our discussions already. The first is the lease payments. Manager of Public Works had described that we lease three vehicles currently. So this is a decision that was made previously. It's a ten-year lease. And we lease, we lease a heavy-duty work truck with a landscape box, a small SUV for facilities, and a small SUV for the building department. So this is the, the annual lease amount for those, for those vehicles. The next project, seasonal rental and summer fleet. Throughout the course of the year, and especially in the summer, we take on a lot of students, additional labor to help support the departments. And this is basically to, to rental cost to rent four vehicles for a seven-month period per year.
Any, any questions? Counselor Harell?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So when you said the, through the summer, the students, that you hire students. So often, there's programs when you, I'm all about grants tonight, just so you know. Often when you hire students, there's grants that are given for summer employment, that kind of thing. Are we able to, to use that to offset things such as their transportation, if that's, who's going to be operating them?
Yeah, so through you, Mr. Mayor, no, the, some of the summer grants only relate to labor costs.
Any other questions on that? Down to the next one, then, Director.
Next project, in addition to the six combination plow units that we do own and operate, we also rent, or lease two tractors with plows and spreaders units on them. These are used to do a lot of our residential streets in the town. And so this is a, this is a, basically a seasonal rental of those tractors for the, for the winter maintenance period, two tractors.
Any questions? Counselor Hilbermann?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I've got a lot of friends who own big farms. And they, they rent their tractors out, and some, some of them are driving their tractors in Toronto as snow removal machines. Is, is that the kind of approach this municipality uses? Do you use the local guys with the big tractors? Because these guys are local farmers and they're driving them all the way there.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll refer this question back to my manager of public works and fleet.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Last year, last season, we did rent a tractor. It was from a, a local tractor supply company that would, that would take tractors off, or lease tractors from local farmers and utilize for the program. It was a lot more expensive than we're currently paying.
These are actual local farmers who are using their own equipment, and they're being rented by Toronto to do their work.
We're, we're currently using our own staff to operate.
And they, and they, last year, they did the same thing. They rented some of their own equipment to Toronto on that basis as well. Just some differences.
Next.
Go ahead.
Sorry, sorry. Next item on, on the projects for the fleet, four-by-four patrol and response trucks, so. This is a, this is a new truck which would be used. It's a four-by-four. There's been some safety issues brought up in respect to the fact that the patrols are out on the roads before the plows even get out, so. Currently, we don't have any four-by-four trucks, and so this, this truck would be used primarily for winter patrol operations and being out on the road before our plows even get out. So this replaces a, this replaces a thirteen-year-old high-kilometer truck. Again, if there's any further questions with respect to that truck and what it's replacing, I guess I would refer that back to my manager of, of public works, but any questions?
Yes, if I may ask one, and I hate to ask it. Has this been deferred before, or is this a, a new request?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I will refer that back to my manager.
I believe this is a new request to, to replace an older vehicle.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Corr?
So I don't, how do we get that, the building inspector car off if we don't want to have that on? Do I red dot or red circle it, or?
Well, first you'd have to perhaps explain why, what would you gain by taking that off?
Forty thousand dollars.
But it doesn't affect the levy at all.
Listen, it's taxpayers' money, so it, it doesn't matter where we, where it comes from.
We've already been told that it's in pretty rough shape.
So one other question. So I'm looking at last year's capital expenditures. We didn't, so far in two thousand, or two thousand eighteen, December thirty-first, we didn't spend a dime on the fleet? And now you're asking for a hundred and sixty-two thousand. Like, why is this, why, why are we the ones that gotta pay? Last year, we didn't spend nothing, and now we're paying for it. I just don't get it. I just don't get it. No one spent anything last year, and now we're, we're stuck at it. And we look like the bad guys when we ask to take forty thousand dollars off. I just, as a businessman, I, I just don't get it. You know, do any, anybody here have up-to-date on what we spent on total fleet last year?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the list that you have here, this is prior year's carry-forward project, so what's showing up here are the actual projects that that have not been spent, but we have other ones that were spent, so you're not, you're not seeing the other vehicles. Just look at the numbers, vehicle oh-one, oh-six, seven, twelve, thirteen.
I think we should have, in, in my opinion, we should have what we spent last year and what we're spending this year. So we have a better understanding of where we're moving.
Okay, so the purpose of the appendix three was just to show you of the, the two-point-six million dollars of carry-forward. That was the intent of that. So through the quarterly reports, you will see the total actual spend. So that, that will come when I give you the report for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first. So that report comes every quarter of how much we spent to date for capital. I just haven't given that one because we're, we're just finishing off.
Ryan, did you have something? Oh, okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? Go ahead, Director.
Well, that's the end of, of the fleet presentation, so. Proposed budget is a hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. On to Schedule seventeen, cemeteries and capital budget. Cemeteries capital budget. So cemetery operations in the Town of Pelham. We look at three sites, so there's the Font Hill Cemetery and Hillside Cemetery, which include barrels, grass-cutting, snow-clearing, installations of cemetery lot markers and tree maintenance. We also take care of, just, just maintaining the grounds at the Mettler Road Cemetery. So the capital budget for cemeteries includes one item. It is a monument lifting device. It's been raised as a health and safety issue. Currently, to lift monuments, we're using some nylon straps. Has the potential of slipping and, and, and causing harm. So this is a, this is a device that's used that I will actually clamp on to that monument to, to lift it into place.
Thank you. Is that, so is that if a monument falls, a headstone falls over, is that basically, or what would, where would you use this? Hopefully not vandalism. Explain to me where that would be used.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna turn this over to my manager of public works. Fleet and now cemeteries.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's a, there's a number of locations where we're, where we sell plots, where we're trying to get the backhoe in, in, in down the road. The actual monument in front of the backhoe is, is in the way, and we risk damaging the, damaging the headstone. So the monument lifting device literally just would grab it and move it out of the way without having to strap.
Okay, and then you put it back in again when you're done?
Put it back in.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks. Okay, thank you.
Schedule eighteen. So now, now we'll look at the capital budgets for our wastewater, and, and following that, we'll tie in the water. So again, I apologize, this is a very small pictorial, but what it does is kind of gives you an idea of what our wastewater management system looks like. As you can see, this was, this was a study that was done a few years back by an engineering firm, GM Blue Plan. They, they, they did a model of our wastewater system. So the important thing to note here, it doesn't show up very well on the slide. The majority of the system operates fairly efficiently. There are no issues. One of the things that did come up as part of the, the model, in running the model, is that we do have some deficiencies in the Fenwick area. So a couple of other things I'll, I'll note here as well. This model was done before East Font Hill came online. And as it comes online, however, the development in East Font Hill is brought over directly to Rice Road and, and ties in with the regional trunk. Okay, so it doesn't really affect our sanitary system as much because it ties directly into the regional main and comes down into the well and treatment plant. The, the main points of concern with our system are, there are capacity issues in east, in east. The, um, the main points of concern with our system are there are capacity issues in East, uh, in East Fenwick. So again, this doesn't show, uh, the proposed developments that are coming online out in Fenwick. Um, there are, there are a few, um, the old fire station, Baxter Hall and the Oak Haven subdivision that's scheduled to come online. We're guessing that they're probably two or three years off. However, when we ran the model, if you look on the slide or on your, on your handout, you'll see the red and, uh, yellow orgy areas. So, and if you look at the, the, the legend, you'll see, um, there's different levels of surcharging, which basically means, uh, when they ran their model based on what we have currently, they were, they were identifying deficiencies in our system with respect to capacity. Okay, so there's two important projects that I'll talk about, um, as part of the, the wastewater budget. One is upgrading the, uh, the sanitary sewer on Foss Road and one is upgrading the sanitary sewer on a portion of Church. Basically, all the flows from the Fenwick area come down Church Street to Foss, come over, hit the regional pumping station, and then it's a force main, the region pumps it over to, um, uh, Rice Road, no, Palom, Palom. And then it's, it's gravity fed down to the well and treatment plant. So the, uh, the important thing to note here is that, um, as development comes online in the Fenwick area specifically, uh, we're gonna start running into capacity issues with that sanitary sewer.
So, uh, Mr. Director, that, um, going back to Foss Road and, um, the region doing that either to you or Ryan, I thought the region has been, they must be, uh, getting into our bad habits and deferring because wasn't the region, I thought for the last two or three years, everyone thought that, well, this year the region is gonna do that trunk line and then nothing ever happens and Foss Road stays the way it is. But has that been an ongoing, and now I see it's still twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, am I right, or maybe I'll ask, Ryan, hasn't the region been proposing to do Foss Road for the last, uh, X number of years or am I wrong on that?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe the project first came to our attention in two thousand and thirteen.
Yes. Okay, and they just keep deferring it also then? Yeah, and we can't do anything, not that we, uh, if we wanted to do anything to Foss Road, we wouldn't really be able to do it because of the water main, uh, or the, the, the main under it, I suppose. Or the main's off to the side somewhat.
We could do our, for you, Mr. Mayor, we could do our upgrade without affecting their upgrade.
Oh, I see. Oh, okay. Two different projects. Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks.
So just to, just to confirm that through you, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, our, our limits for our projects would end at the pumping station. So we have capacity issues in our system which we would deal with. This is a, this is a number. I'm, I'm looking at getting together with the region's water and wastewater department to discuss some of their, uh, capital projects moving forward. Um, based on discussions, uh, they were estimated to be in the area of twenty-twenty-seven to do, uh, this pumping station and replace this force main.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
So another, another thing we do with our sanitary, uh, sewers, we, we complete investigations and studies. Um, this was actually a study, again, completed by GM Blue Plan. And what to take out of this is basically, you know, there's a legend here and it tells you different defects or different things that are, they're, they've identified with the sanitary sewer system. The important thing, uh, is that this is being done. So it's a, it's good common practice and, uh, I guess industry best practices to try to, uh, inspect your sanitary sewer system at least once every five years. So, um, we have a program that you'll see on our budget sheets, um, that we, it's called CCTV inspection. So what it basically is, it's a, it's a camera that gets sent through the, the pipes to have a look at them, to see if there's any, um, any deficiencies with that pipe. Um, you can look and see where there's issues with respect to inflow and infiltration. Obviously, the, the region, uh, treats that water that we take to them. So, um, if we can tighten up our system, um, you know, the region, um, looks forward to us trying to do that and they do provide grants for that type of work. So, um, in the future, we'll be looking to, to take advantage of some of those grant opportunities through their C S O program. But this, and this is something that, um, that we can work with. Historically, Palom doesn't really have, uh, an inflow and infiltration issue, um, partly because of the type of soils that we have. Um, it's, there's, there's not a lot of, uh, issues with respect to inflow and infiltration. Other municipalities within the, the Niagara region do have, uh, a major issue with this type of stuff. So, um, the important thing, and I think it's a, it's a, it's a best practice, uh, to make sure you're looking at your system at least once every five years. So, um, we have a program in place, uh, to, to do flushing and CCTV, CCTV inspections annually. Um, and we're gonna, we're gonna take a look at our system and break it into, um, sectors so that we can look at each one of those segments and, and have a, have up-to-date information on the condition of our sewers. That's all, that's the only reason I wanted to show you this is that, um, you'll see that our, our budget for our wastewater program is fairly limited this year due to, uh, budget constraints. So I just wanted to give you an idea kind of of what our system looked like and the importance of, uh, maintaining a, a good, um, inspection, uh, on that, on your facility so that you know the condition.
If I may ask one, so the, the region obviously, um, measures their flow right at their plant then?
Right. They know, yeah, they know what they treat.
Yeah.
They know, they know what they're pumping.
Yes, so like you say, if you've got leaks anywhere in your system, adds to the volume, volume that's, that they've gotta treat.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
So the first project, uh, going through line by line, um, is the Church Street upgrade. We talked about that section of Church Street out in, uh, Fenwick. The existing sewer is a two hundred and fifty millimeter diameter sewer. Uh, we're proposing to, uh, increase that to a three hundred and fifty millimeter diameter sewer. So this project, um, if you look at your list of deferred projects, Foss Road was one of the projects that we deferred. So that was the section that led up to the pumping station from Church to the pumping station on Foss. Um, again, that was an upgrade, uh, to a three hundred and fifty millimeter diameter store, or sanitary sewer. As we, we got into the design and it's actually, we've got design money that we're currently using, uh, to, to design that project. Uh, we ended up, uh, running into soil issues. Uh, the cost of the project, which is really originally estimated at eight hundred and fifty thousand, uh, now is estimated at, I think, over one point two, um, million dollars. So, um, obviously, this is a project, since, since the design is still going on, uh, for that section and we're working through, um, the soils issues and designing that project, uh, we deferred the construction to that work, okay? So to a, to a future year. Um, again, I think it's important to have, uh, shovel-ready projects ready to go and that's why we felt it was important to, um, have a design component, uh, for Church Street so that we can design it, uh, in conjunction with Foss and, and, uh, and then be shovel-ready, ready to go, um, so that we can get these developments online and, and be able to service, uh, service the developments in Fenwick. So this first project is only designed.
Any questions? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. What do you mean by, uh, soil, improper soil conditions from, uh, Foss, or from Church to Foss?
Uh, difficult soils, uh, conditions. So we do have, uh, high water tables, um, and, uh, I think, I'd like, through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer this back to Ryan. I know we've, we've had, uh, some work on that area and he can maybe discuss some of the challenges and issues that we're facing over in that, uh, in that area.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, the, in, in particular, in this corner of, uh, Fenwick, there, there's a high water table. There's also different layers of sand, hardpan, um, silty soil and a little bit of clay in some areas. So when you're trying to trench through that, if you have a layer of clay above a layer of, of, of free-flowing sand and gravel, um, as you're digging through that, you end up with massive trench collapse. Uh, to combat that, it's usually a de-watering program, um, and the project does tend to take a lot longer. It's, it's, it's to, to make it safe for employees and, and staff to work out there. They, there's an awful lot more work that's involved in, in trenching. But you find that particularly in that side of, uh.
So again, once again, through, thanks for the explanation. So that's from, uh, uh, Church Street right to the pumping station down on Foss, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. That's a lot of, you find pockets here and there, um, and you find that through soil. Uh, the guys, the, the engineering company will come and do bore holes and they, they look for these issues. Uh, if you move a hundred meters one way or another, it might not occur there. It's sort of, it, it, it pops up everywhere. Same in Font Hill and up on the cane. You run into these pockets of, of extremely bad soil that just happens to be one of them.
And, well, sorry, one more part of that question through you, Mr. Mayor. Is there sewers right now, or I lived on Church Street, but from Church down to the, uh, pumping station on Foss or are they on septic?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. There, there's, there's sanitary sewer runs from, on Church Street, it runs from Foss Road to, uh, uh, Camro. Um, and on Foss Road, there are sewers maybe two, three hundred meters west of Church and then Church to the pumping station.
Okay, that's, it just builds up some, uh, questions and some concerns that we have with, uh, potential greenhouses going in on Foss Road right there with the soil conditions. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Nope. No, go ahead.
Good. Uh, the next project, um, Hay Street Well and Road to Beckett. So, um, forty-five thousand dollars. This is actually a water main project, replacement project, that we're gonna be completing on Haste. So what this component of that project would be, forty-five thousand, is when we come through with our water main and we disturb the sanitary laterals, this would be to make repairs and amendments to those sanitary laterals. So not a main replacement, it's, it's identified here as part of our sanitary capital budget, but it's really to support the water main installation project. So sanitary lateral replacement project. We have, we have a couple, um, annual programs. Sanitary lateral replacement project, this is an annual program that's, uh, designed to replace any damaged or blocked sanitary sewer lateral. So that basically sixty thousand dollars, we try to get four or five lateral replacements done and they're basically, uh, customer-driven. So if we get complaints or a blocked san- uh, sanitary lateral, we gotta go in and do repairs or, or maintenance on those. Um, that's where, that's the fund that, uh, that this comes from. Okay? Again, I talked about the sanitary sewer inspection and CCTV and flushing. So this is that annual program that would, um, involve maintenance, so flushing of the sanitary sewers as well as, um, having a good visual inspection on that infrastructure so that you're, we, we know the condition and we can use that to better plan and prioritize future, uh, replacement projects. And one other thing is that, um, when we get our asset management plan in place, um, information like the CCTV work and knowing the condition of that sanitary system and, and what your infrastructure is on the ground, uh, that all feeds into that program so that you have good reliable information to make, uh, good decisions, uh, on. And final, uh, program there, it's, again, it's an annual program. Sanitary sewer capital construction. Uh, this is, this is really, uh, a budget that's in place, um, to deal with any damage to failed sanitary sewers. It's almost like an emergency fund that we use in case we need to, uh, do work throughout the year, uh, to replace, uh, sanitary sewers that have failed. So I, I, the two programs here, the annual programs, the hundred and forty thousand, um, you know, they're, they're basically, uh, repairs on, on, on sanitary sewer issues and, and this is the type of thing that picks these up. So when you do your CCTV inspections, um, you know, identify, we know where a lot of our issues are and we'll, we'll, we'll try to pinpoint some of those areas for replacements underneath those programs. Okay, moving on, schedule nineteen. Water distribution system. So our water distribution system, um, we're a class-two system. We, we operate approximately eighty-five kilometers of water main. The water main, water mains that we have are a distribution system, so we don't, we don't treat water. We receive that from Niagara region through the Well and Water Treatment Plant. I know everybody on council has sat through the, the orientation that we did, uh, for our drinking water quality, quality management system. But just to give you another kind of overview of how our system works, we receive, uh, treated water from Niagara region from the Well and Water Treatment Plant. It's transported via seven hundred and fifty millimeter diameter force main, which, uh, goes to Schultz Reservoir up on Schultz Drive. And from there, it's pumped out to service the lower end of Palom as well as the, uh, the east side of Palom. And then it's also pumped up to, it's a bad map, but it's pumped up to a, a water tower up in the Chestnut Ridge lookout area. And that water tower ultimately feeds, uh, the Chestnut Lookout Area, the, the upper part of, uh, of Palom, Font Hill, as well as it, uh, has a, a distribution system down to Fenwick, feeds portions of Fenwick. In a nutshell, that's, that's how our, our system works. Um, we do have some challenges, uh, surrounding that. Uh, the water pressure in Chestnut Ridge lookout area because of the elevation difference and with respect to the elevation of, of the tank, uh, we have a small pumping station that the region maintains and operates, um, for, on our behalf. But that, that pumping station acts to supply, uh, adequate pressures to, to the Chestnut Ridge lookout area. Um, as well as you can imagine, uh, as you have differences in elevation, um, the higher the difference in elevation, uh, the more pressure you get. So we, we operate under a, a number of different, uh, pressure systems. So we try to maintain, um, safe operating pressures, uh, in the range of, um, seventy, eighty PSI? Yeah, sixty, eighty PSI. So in order to do that, we have pressure-reducing valves that control pressures and, and that's kind of how our system works. Um, we're legislated under the Safe Water Drinking Act, Act, which was established in two thousand and two following, uh, the Walkerton tragedy. Um, so basically that, that act, uh, provides a consistent, uh, promise-wide set of standards and rules, um, governing the roles and responsibilities, standard of care, um, for delivering, uh, reliable, uh, high-quality drinking water to residents. So, uh, because we're, we're a distribution system, we're a class-two system, we're not actually treating the water. Uh, as a talent, our responsibility is to, uh, maintain the integrity of the distribution system and to prevent any recontamination, uh, after we're receiving the treated water from the region. So, um, the projects that are identified here as part of our drinking water quality management system, we do an annual infrastructure review as part of that as well. So we'll, we'll take a look at our system as a whole. We'll look at the, uh, number of breaks, any water quality issues that we have, uh, throughout the year. And as a management team, we, we review that, analyze that and then, uh, recommend, there's recommendations that are put forward for replacements to, um, some of the, uh, underground infrastructure with respect to our distribution system for drinking water. So I mentioned this earlier, the first project is the Hay Street Well and Road to Beckett Crescent, including a small portion on Well and Road, to the west of Haste, not to the east where we have the, the roadway that's failing. But this is a small section of cast iron pipe that, or cast iron main that will need to be replaced as part of this project. It's an existing nineteen fifty-five, uh, six-inch cast iron water main, um, operates at high pressures, um, greater than eighty-five PSI. So, uh, that's part of the reason why we have, are, are getting a lot of breaks in that area. And again, like I said, it's, uh, it's, it was identified as, um, a critical infrastructure replacement underneath the, uh, drinking water quality management system. So this, this project will involve, uh, replacing that water main. Um, again, going back to the wastewater, there's gonna be a component there where we bring the water main through that's going to have sanitary sewer lateral replacements. Um, as well, if you look into your, um, carry forward As well, if you look into your carry-forward projects, there's a project in there that I think is for $111,000 or $120,000 for roadwork. So this would be to reinstate road, roadway in that area where we do our water main and sanitary sewer replacement. So those three together will make up a project that will get put out for tender as, as one complete project. The water system repair equipment, this is an annual program, $30,000, and it, it replaces, replacement of stock items for valves, hydrants, couplers, anything we need to properly maintain our, our, our distribution system. And then the other program or project we have as part of the water budget is the Pelham Street North Water Main Replacement. So this is the one I talked about earlier. If the recommendation is, and this one's already been deferred as well from previous years, so we do experience quite a number of breaks in this area. It's, it's an old cast iron water main, originally put in place in 1935. So the recommendation is, it's been deferred a few times now, so the idea was, if the project doesn't move forward with the reconstruction of North Pelham Street, let's at least get the water main done. So in the case that we don't get funding and this project doesn't move ahead, then we're recommending to go ahead with at least the water main replacement this year.
Any questions on that one? Okay. So the water main in that particular section, does that run alongside, or were you, or is that right down the middle of the road? Do you know where it's located and, and that particular spot?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, just to confirm, are you talking about Hay Street or Pelham?
The one we just, the one you're talking about now...
Great, north?
Yeah, yeah, the Pelham Street. The Pelham Street and replacement, the one for 250, right? And then, but if you don't do the drainage one, you're going to do the water main. So I was just wondering, where does that water main, are you going to be tearing up the road to fix the water main? Or is the water main beside the road?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'll, again, defer that question to my manager. One, one thing I will say is that if it's a water main replacement project specifically, the contractor can usually, as, as you can see on Station Street, can keep a nice, tight, neat trench, and the reinstatement for that would be fairly minimal. What you don't want is the, the flip side, where you reconstruct the road and then obviously go back and have to replace a water main that keeps breaking.
Yeah.
So the preference would be to, to do that as one complete project and, and not have to do the water main replacement work ahead of a road reconstruction project. But in terms of trying to maintain a safe and reliable drinking water system, doing this method is, is probably, it's, it's, it's common practice in, in a lot of different municipalities to do that. But I will, I will defer the question back as well to my manager. If he, do you know where the location of the water main is?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it is in the center of the Southbound Lane.
Of course. Okay.
The nice part about that is the road condition is not great, so a little wider trench with restoration might improve some of that.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
Okay, any further questions? Schedule 20.
Want me to do it?
Yeah, if you want, I'll fill up the reserves after. I'll just have the, this is Barb's budget.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So this is the capital budget for community planning and development, and there are two items on here. The first one is with respect to completing the East Fenwick Secondary Plan. And so there's a proposed budget of amount of $20,000 to, to finish that project up. And then also for the second project is to complete the zoning bylaw. Again, another $20,000 allotment for completing that project. Any questions?
Any questions, anyone? Yep, Mayor, Councilor Stewart?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Like, to complete the zoning bylaw and, and the, the other project, are those done in-house?
No, we do have consultants working on both of those projects. And with respect to the East Fenwick project, they are at budget with this, this project. And in order to finish it, there's additional funds that are required. And what's happened is, over the course of last year, when there was a switchover between the MPCA and the region in terms of reviewing these documents, we were under the, I guess, the belief that the MPCA was reviewing this document on behalf of the region. And so we proceeded quite a ways down the road on this. It turned out that the MPCA did not complete the review. And when they handed off the project to the, to the region, it ended up being some, I guess, significant work that needed to be addressed in order to satisfy the region. And we had gotten previous sign-offs by other agencies with respect to that. So now it was double-backing and redoing the work. And then with respect to the zoning bylaw, again, there's a consultant that's been retained to do this. This consultant started on this project quite a number of years ago, and it's been going on in, in fits and starts. But we do need to get it completed. And there had been a number of workshops with council previous in terms of how the bylaw would be presented, and what it would look like, and how it would work. And that's resulted in a complete rework of the bylaw. And then we received a copy of it last summer, and there was still significant work that needed to be done. The consultants have been doing it. And again, they're, they're kind of at their budget. And in fact, there's lots of the work that they've billed for, they haven't been paid for. But in order to finish it off, there's additional funds that are, are needed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yep. My, Councilor Stewart?
Yeah, for the, the completing zoning bylaw portion of it. It says, required to complete the zoning bylaw, provincial legislation requires zoning bylaw to be amended to conform with the official plan.
Correct.
It might be, so...
So our zoning bylaw is 1987.
Yep.
The official plan was adopted by council in 2012 and approved by 2014.
Okay.
So it does need to be updated to comply with the, with the official plan.
With the official plan.
And legislation requires you to do that within three years. So we're already a year behind.
So the official plan is like the standard that we would want to be to, the preferred plan?
Yes, the official plan sets the policies and the standards that you have, and it provides the guidance or the framework for the zoning bylaw. And then you have to bring your zoning bylaw in to, to comply with that.
So, and one more question. So we have a, a budget of $20,000 for each of those.
Yes.
And I know they're going through, consultants are doing that. So is this like a cost plus? Or was this quoted and, you know, when they get to their budget, say, hey, we need more money to complete it?
So for both of those, they have gotten to their budget. And for the East Fenwick Secondary Plan, they, they came to their budget kind of last summer, but they've continued to work on the project and have sent us billings with very minimal amount on it. They're just doing the work, but they're also at a point where, you know, they really can't be doing this that much longer. And so they've asked if there was any ability to get some additional funds to, to finish the project off. Both of these, I think we would be able to complete, you know, certainly by, hopefully by the summer of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Councilor.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So is there consideration then for the, the consultants for their work then for things like the short-term vacation rentals and cannabis, now that those are, are new hot topics that we can deal with as far as changing zoning or anything? Are there, are there new considerations there for those?
The cannabis and the other item are being done in-house by staff.
I think that's, got it, Director? Thank you.
Thank you. Services. Okay, so we have, let's see.
Library services, $10,000 is the annual request for the library for their acquisitions.
Any questions?
Acquisition?
Now, they did put forward the, I think it was $250,000 for that renovation for the basement. And we deferred that to 2020. We, we didn't bring it forward.
Okay.
Library no land.
Any questions on that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Although this doesn't fall into this item, it does have to do with the library. And we are talking budget, so it seems like an appropriate time. Although it may not be a popular thing to say, I do have difficulty understanding why we need a CEO for the town.
HR discussion.
Okay.
Oh, Councilor Hilton, okay?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. When I was talking to our manager of IT, I saw what he was doing for our computers here to upgrade them, and it wasn't costing anywhere near those prices. I'm wondering whether he should be involved in deciding what those...
I think those are their books. That's their acquisitions, the library.
Computer developments, computer service development?
It says technology services development, new library acquisitions. I think it's their annual acquisitions. It's now, is it saying there? I'm sorry.
If you go to the next page.
It says computer services development.
Oh, yeah, if you go to the next page, okay. Computer services development.
Okay, I can follow up on that, but that's their annual allotment. IT, let's see what we can do. Schedule 22, this one is the municipal drainage. I'll just pass this over to the Director.
So this one is, it's a single project under municipal drainage, referred to as brushing of the Swayze Drain. When we held the open house on municipal drainage this fall, there were some requests that came in with regards to need for clearing the Swayze Drain. So we've included an allotment into, into this for the, for budgeting purposes.
So I thought, correct me if I'm wrong, obviously, any work done on a municipal drain is billed back to the landowners?
Yes, it is billed back. The town does pay for the work. We contract it out, and it gets paid for. After the bills are paid, then we invoice benefiting landowners for that work. And then if there's any municipal land that's benefiting on that work, then there's the town portion of that as well.
Great, thank you. I guess that's it.
Schedule 24, this is reserves and reserve funds. So in your tab 24, it talks about the reserves. And if you look at that, it's the, in the operating budget, in the, in your operating budget, there's dollars allotted to get transferred to the reserves. And then for the reserves or reserve funds, it's what funds the capital expenditures. So that's just a diagram, just to show how the capital projects are funded. And the notes are in, in your binder, and it just talks about the reserves that are established by council as part of the financial strategy to fund programs or capital projects. So it's an allocation from the accumulated surplus of the town. It's not associated with any specific asset. A reserve is generally used to mitigate the impact of fluctuations in operating costs and revenues. So we have reserve funds. Reserve funds are obligatory reserves. And typically, what they would be is development charges, parkland dedication, federal gas tax, Ontario Community Infrastructure Fund, and other restricted grants are obligatory reserves. And so what we did is, we did a five-year reserve forecast summary. Has been prepared to illustrate the long-range financial planning of the town. And the table that's in your binder illustrates the projections based on the current capital plan with reserve transfers from the operating budget increasing by 5% per year. So the current reserve allocation is about $3.2 million. And that is not nearly enough of what's needed to fund the deferred maintenance of this town. Normally, what you should have is equivalent to your amortization or depreciation of your assets, which in our case is $5 million. So we should be spending $5 million every year to address the capital needs of the town. Right now, we're at 3.2. So when we did this forecast, we said, well, let's see what it would be to increase the reserves by 5% a year. And this forecast has not assumed any debentures, so it's like we're not taking out any debt. And it's hard to see there, but you'll see that, you know, by 2020, the reserves are in a deficit balance of $2 million, and then it goes right to $6 million, and $11 million, and $14 million. That's, that's based on the, if you take the reserve balances less the projected capital projects, that's how much money we don't have to fund the capital projects. That, that's what this schedule shows is, is the shortfall of actual revenue to, to fund the... And then those are just the notes. So reserve fund projection, so five-year reserve fund projection was prepared to illustrate long-term financial planning. The same thing here. This is the development charge reserve fund. As you know, we collect development charge revenue, and the money's put into a reserve. And this is based on the estimates of anticipated amount type and location of the development. And that's how, how the, the revenue is determined. And so, once again, you have this in your binder, it just shows you that the five-year projected development charge reserve fund and with the projects that we have, along with how the revenue is being collected, this is what the impact is on those funds. And...
Oh, wait a minute. Von?
Yeah.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Could we just go back to the reserve forecast, and it has a dollar bill on there? And, and I'm sorry, I'm not the brightest guy here, but could we just, the reserve fund, you start off with 1.947 million, then you climb up to 2.4 million. And it goes down to $85,000. So what is that, what, what is that to a plain person who pays taxes? What does that mean to them? That 1.9... You're right on the bottom line there. Yeah, total reserve.
Yeah, so that's the, so as of December 31st, 2017, that's actually the, the number from the financial statements. So that is what is the reserves, the balance of the reserves in those various categories. So for example, the building department has $1,190,000 of money set aside to spend for the building department. So that, that's what that is. And so what we did is, and you can see the detail of your sheets, is that we, using the projected capital expenditures that we're anticipating in the years to come, and then what we think the, the reserve transfers are going to be, and increase 5% every year, there's not enough money being allocated to cover the capital needs of the town. So if you look at the...
So that's in 2020, we're going to be in the deficit of...
Showing the shortfall of $2.1 million. In 2021, it's 6.4, and then 2022, it's 11.5.
So you're saying in the reserve for December 31st, 2018, we have $2.4 million in our reserves?
That, that number is a projected number, because the year-end's not finished yet. We're still, we still have to wrap up this year. But the 2017 is based on the financial statements, and then the 2018 is the...
How close are we with the 2.4? How close are we with the two point four? You must have a, a ballpark. We're only.
Yeah.
Are we close to two point four, or are we really below two point four?
No, I can't give you the number because we, we just closed the, the accounts payable, and now we're doing all of the allocations. Uh, I'll give you the number in.
Okay, so we, land, did we purchase land for one point five million dollars in two thousand and eighteen, or is that?
That's the, that's the ending balance. So in twenty seventeen, we were two point five million dollars of, um, of an overdraft in the, uh, reserve for land because of the, uh, the Wellspring purchase. And then in twenty eighteen, we sold the remnant of the land for one point one million, and that's why the number went down from two point five to one point five. So the, it's still short, though.
So these are not accurate numbers? They're just numbers that?
They're, they're projected.
Projected.
Yeah.
When are we going to get the actual numbers?
When we bring you the financial statements.
Okay, so.
No, but this is, the, the purpose of this is to show you that, um, the capital projects that have been projected in the next ten years, you know, based on the schedule that we have, and the amount of money that's being allocated to the reserves is not enough. That's what this is showing you.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, in two thousand and twenty, we're going to be in a deficit of two point one million dollars.
If we spend what's on that list, on the list that, you know, the list of the twenty twenty capital projects. Yes.
So what, how do we stop that? Do we raise taxes? Do we stop spending?
Well, we have to look at, um, so don't forget that the capital asset management plan is coming to council. And that's a new tool that we're using to assess when these capital projects have to get done. Uh, right now, this is staff's best estimate of when these projects have to get done. So it's, you know, up to council to go through and, you know, is to say which one, which projects we're doing, which ones we're not doing. Uh, some of them are, you know, a new development as well, so you just, you, you have a detailed list in, in your binder of all the capital projects that, um, that, um, are projected to be spent.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, in twenty, or twenty twenty-two, what's driving it up to eleven million dollars?
I need my binder. I think it's, I think it's East Fenwick.
Probably.
Yeah.
East Fenwick.
Yeah. Two thousand dollars is in Fenwick.
So twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, those are the big ones.
The one, Barb?
The East Fenwick on.
Fenwick Development? The East Fenwick Development.
I don't. I don't see a number standing out from one year to the other that would make it four million dollars.
Okay.
That's all, it's just something doesn't, I see a million dollars here, I presume it adds up then. Okay.
Okay, so just, um, just maybe to help you out how these binders work here. Um, let's just do one, just a minute. Where's, where's the roads, budget roads? Fifteen, so let's go, let's go to tab fifteen for a minute. Just, um, so in tab fifteen, you know, you, you would have the, uh, the, it, the summary of the capital projects for twenty nineteen. And then when you flip over, you'll see the projected budget, so you'll see all of the, uh, the, the twenty twenty expenditures, twenty twenty-one. So you'll see all those projects listed, so that tells you where we are anticipating the dollars going. And then in the back of that schedule, you'll actually see the reserve balances for the next ten years. And the actual, um, expenditures tie in, the lines tie in, and this is how the numbers are carried forward. So we can, we can go through in a bit more detail.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, you want to have a positive, right? You don't want brackets.
Yeah, you do. Just showing right now that next, you know, ten-year capital expenditures that are on the list that council still has to approve, because you're only approving twenty nineteen, you haven't approved those yet. If we continue with what's on the list, that's what, that's what the reserves are going to look like.
Eight hundred and fifty-one thousand.
The balances, yeah.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. So basically, we're going in the wrong direction here. There's no. Can't approve this, we're going.
The only way you can improve it is by putting more money into the reserve.
Or, or not, or not do some of the projects.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, this is real simple.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's, there's two options. One, you know, to not do some of the, the projects, or get someone else to pay for that. Because in, uh, in some municipalities, when they do development, they actually get the developers to, to do the upfronting of the cost, so that could be an option. As opposed to the town doing the upfront of the cost.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, the, the Summerside Street, we paid two point five million dollars, did we not? For that new road? Like, where did that money come from? Did it come from the reserves?
Well, it came from, um, right now, it's part of the approved but unissued debt.
So we, we.
Still have to issue debt to pay for it.
So we built something that we didn't have money for, and now we have. Borrowing.
The approval from council was that the debenture was going to be issued to pay for it, so that's what it was coming from, was coming from debt.
But it wasn't on the capital budget for two thousand and eighteen?
It wasn't a capital, but it was prior to that. It was approved. It was, it was, um, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think it was like in fifteen or sixteen. Yeah, they were.
I'm sorry to ask these questions.
But they can't move forward without council's approval. Those projects can't move forward without council's approval. And so all the other projects that, you know, the ones for next year and ongoing, has to have your approval in year, so nothing's moving forward. This is just to give you a snapshot of all those projects that are listed here. If we move forward the way it is, and we only allocate the, you know, three point two million dollars of, um, uh, to, to the reserves, this is what it's going to look like. There's, there's not enough money being allocated to cover these projects.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the selling of the old arena lands for, say roughly, three, two point seven million dollars, is that going to go towards the capital of two thousand and nineteen? Is that what, why we're doing this?
No, the, uh, the arena land, uh, revenue, the, the proceeds, the cash proceeds are going towards the two point six million dollars of projects that were approved prior to twenty nineteen, that, that list that you have there. That's where it's going. We're, we're, we're catching up here. That's what we're doing, we're catching up.
So we're catching.
After, after that's done, then we're caught up, and then what we do is we are in year, we, we spend what we have in year. I'm catching up here.
So we, we're selling the arena lands because we got to catch up?
We have to, we have obligations that we have to meet. Right now, I don't have the cash in the reserves. Yep.
But this is showing, oh, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor, this is showing that we have two point four million in reserves at the end of, as of December?
That's our, our estimate right now. Yeah, our projection right now, but look, there's lines in there that have negative balances.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilor Hahn?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor, physician recruitment. Okay, I have a question mark beside that one. So every year, it's got twenty-three, one thirty-five. We do physician recruitment, municipality does this?
Yeah, yeah.
We've been actively doing this?
Well, if the balance hasn't changed, then we haven't been using it, so it's just sitting there.
So that money is, it's, again, it's not grant money, it's just money that we've put there to do recruitment, but we haven't really been doing it.
I, I don't know what recruitment's been done. But right now, we haven't been using the reserve for that.
And the community improvement plan, I think we talked about this, uh, earlier in another meeting, but that is something that, what we've committed to already, we are followed through on. But that's not new money that we're going to be, um, looking at.
Right, but.
It's just commitments we've already made, well, previous councils already made.
Right.
So Madame Treacher, do you have, um, I know this is a big thing at the region, and that's how come everyone saw a big, uh, input or a big increase in the water bills, because we figured out in twenty twenty, we were going to hit what's known as a wall. Because exactly they're doing at the region what is happening here. You, you're not keeping up with your infrastructure needs. And then, so you put maybe ten million in the bank, but every year, fifteen million dollars worth of infrastructure is wearing out. So sooner or later, boom, uh, the region, they're saying by twenty twenty, I believe, uh, we, we were going to be forty or fifty million dollars short. So that's why everybody's water went up the way that did, because you've got a, if you're, uh, financially responsible at all, and if you can possibly do it, you have, it's like putting money in a bank, saving up for a car. Uh, you know your infrastructure's going to wear out, whether it's roads, sewers, water lines, and if you don't put the money in reserves, boom. All of a sudden, you, you, you're feeling a lot of pain in, in a, in a short period of time. So in, when I see this, uh, like Mr. Counselor Cora's pointed out, I mean, I mean, it's a compounding effect is what I see it as. Uh, you get behind by six, and then the next time, it's, it's back up to eleven, but have you, uh, done any calculations? Because that's all they would be at this point, as to, um, right now, I think, did you say we're putting three point seven?
I think it's three point two.
Okay, so would we almost have to double that?
Yeah, we should be at five million dollars. That's what we should be, we should be putting in, whatever the depreciation is.
Yes, yes.
And looking at, you know, what are the items on there that, um, that have been put on for capital expenditure, to say, are we going to be doing those items? So the big ticket item in, in the years to come is the East Fenwick expansion right now, that development is what's a big ticket item.
But, but, but if we do that the correct way, the developer is the one that's going to show, going to front the money, so where does that cost the town?
Well, right now, we, it's, it's not signed off that they are doing that, so right now, we're showing it as if the town is paying for it.
Oh.
So, I mean, I don't know, Barb, if you want to add anything?
But if I could ask that Director, uh, question of the Director of Planning, i- i- am I not correct that we, uh, the, the planners come in, and they do their subdivision plans, and then they give us, uh, let's say it's five million bucks that's supposed to be sitting in the bank. And then as they could do the infrastructure and the roads, they, that, we give them that money, that money goes into that fund. We, I don't understand why, we're not on the hook for anything, really, if it's done right.
So the developer will build the infrastructure to serve the new development. For existing development, then the town would be responsible for covering the cost to service the existing development that is currently there. So for example, on, um, you know, portions of, um, Camber Road where the sanitary sewer doesn't exist, but it needs to be extended along, uh, Camber Road, and then it goes into the new development area. We would be responsible for that portion along Camber Road to service the existing developer. Now, we can, development, and we can certainly do other things to pass the costs on to homeowners and, and that kind of thing under local improvement. Um, there's different things that, that can happen, but, um, the developers will pay the cost to service, um, development, but not the existing, uh, areas that are, that are currently are not serviced.
Thank you for that. Thank you. Okay. Thank, well, uh, Counselor Cora then, let's go with him.
Okay, so the Meridian Community Center, in two thousand and seventeen, you got nine hundred and fifty-one thousand. Two thousand and eighteen, you have seven, seven hundred and eighty-eight, and all of a sudden, it disappears. What are those numbers?
So that reserve was set aside to fund the, um, the bridge loan. That's, that's, that, that's a reserve to fund the bridge loan.
That was put aside?
To fund, to fund the principal and interest payments of the bridge loan.
So you're saying.
So when, when the, the taxes were being collected before the community center was being built, the money was set aside for, for that.
So that's what we're paying for interest on the, on the community center? And so why does it disappear on the?
Because, uh, then we move it down to, um, like, we, we move it down to another reserve, I think it's the working fund reserve, we, we actually move it down. We consolidate that one down.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Trophy?
Yeah. Through you, Mr. Mayor, so the, uh, the East Fenwick Development, will we, will the town be fronting any of that development like we did in, uh, Fawn Hill? Putting up the upfront cost?
Just fair through you, uh, the town does not own land in East Fenwick like it did in East Fawn Hill. So in East Fawn Hill, the town was responsible for servicing the portion of lands that the town owned. And then the developers, the other developers are responsible for servicing the lands that they own. And, uh, so no, in East Fenwick, um, we don't own land.
Any other questions? If you can move on, then, uh, Madame, Director? Oh, that's it?
That was, that was it. That was just to give you, um, I mean, the, the, what we have is the parkland dedication.
That was very depressing.
Reserve, but, um, and we have the federal gas tax reserve, these are just all the reserves that we have in your binder there. And then these are the schedules here that I talked about behind every tab. Here's tab eleven, you'll see the opening reserve, and then the additions to the reserve, um, and then the expenditures, so, um, they all tie in to your binder if you want to see what makes up the amounts. So those are all the schedules behind those tabs. And that's the background.
If I can ask a question?
Sure.
So, uh, development charges, they, um, I don't know how to best explain this, but let's say you've got a thousand dollars in a development charge. Some, uh, a certain amount goes to outdoor recreation, next goes indoor recreation. Has that ever been readjusted so that we can put more development, a higher percentage of development charge towards the, uh, indoor recreation being MCC, or, uh, or should we be looking at that?
Um, so we did the, the study last year in twenty eighteen, and the recommendation is for us to do an update, um, specifically for that on a annual basis, for the next few years, in order to capture those, that new revenue.
Okay, so, so we'll have to, somewhere along the line, we'll have, and that's when we, we get this, uh, we get the, uh, specialist in to guide us? Or can council just do that?
No, Watson and Associates, they have to do that.
Okay.
So they would just look at that section.
Excellent. Okay, yep, thank you.
So open house requests, um, as you recall, we had an open house in January the seventh, and these are some of the requests that we had. Uh, the first one was the Fawn Hill benchell converts the tier placement of the amphitheater. And we said that it's in the twenty-year forecast for Peace Park for the redevelopment, and right now, it's under the twenty thirty-two multi-year capital plan. That's where it's sitting right now. Uh, Pickwick Place, the town to maintain the median for landscaping, traffic calming on Pancake Lane, there's traffic lights and signals on Pancake Lane. And that's going to be reviewed by Public Works. Uh, the splash pad in Parks, uh, it's in the multi-year capital plan, but it's not in twenty nineteen. And that's one that's come a few times. Playground at the Meridian Community Center, it's part of a multi-year capital plan. Uh, street lighting, look at replacing the lights with LED, it's part of a twenty-year plan, but we also have a grant application that we're submitting uh, this year to look for the LED lights. So I don't know if there's any questions with any of those? Yep.
Maybe you're going to turn the page, but I know I've been in contact with the, uh, with the, um, business that does gypsy moth spraying. And, um, I, I just wondered if Ryan could probably, I could tell us what we spent last year? Because, uh, as I understand it, you know, it, it was a heavy infestation last year or somewhat, and, and it would be kind of, from what I hear from the experts I'm talking to, we had better budget to do something this. we had better budget to do something this year or we're not going to have any trees left in three or four years. So what's your, what's your view on that, Ryan?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. We spent approximately somewhere between 6 and 7,000 dollars last year.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
Last year, we, we, we spent approximately six, between 6 and 7,000.
Oh, okay, excellent. Okay, thank you.
And that was just hillside, uh, hillside, uh, Hillcrest Park.
Okay.
Uh, gypsy moth spraying is, would be something that we put in the operating budget coin.
Okay, has he, uh, uh, because I believe he has to start soon? Or has he started yet, uh, doing any scouting?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, no. Uh, until we can determine whether that program gets in the operating budget, he wouldn't be okay.
Fair enough. Okay, great. Thank you.
Uh, the next budget request was measures to address traffic flow on Regional Road 20. And Public Works is reviewing that. Uh, general road repairs as part of the annual road repair program. Uh, review the pedestrian crosswalks along Pelham Street and removal or changes as warranted. And then the Public Works is looking at that as well. And the other one is addressing the speed issues on Welland Avenue between Haste and Pelham Street. And that's under review as well. So Public Works will come back with their review of those items. Um, replace the electronic sign at Centennial Park. That's in the 2019 capital request. Uh, there's the request for the gypsy moth spraying. Right now, it's not in the capital budget, but I think you just mentioned, Ryan, that you put it in the operating budget? Okay. So storm sewer replacement needs, so it's part of the 20-year capital plan. Sidewalk maintenance, that is part of the 2019 capital budget. The municipal drainage maintenance plan, that's in existence. The maintenance of culverts along River Road, that's part of the annual culprit program in place. And increase the lighting or signage at the intersection of Homestead and Boulevard and Pelham Street. And Public Works is reviewing that as well. And that's it. That's it for the capital budget.
Thank you. Any further questions?
My last question for the night.
Oh, wait, wait, I want to get this on record. Last question for the night.
A year carry forward capital projects. And you have a carry forward amount of 2.6 million dollars. Is it because we didn't have money to pay for those? Are we just?
Can I just send you, should I go back there?
No, no.
Okay, um, now the 2.6 million dollars, yeah, those are the projects that have been started, but not completed. So every year, all the projects don't get done in one year.
But we budget for it and they're saying, did, did we have money? If we wanted to finish it, would we have had the 2.6 million?
No, we didn't because we were catching up from other pro, from other years. We should have had it.
We should have had it, but we didn't.
Yeah, we didn't.
Okay, thank you.
So the one thing, um, and I'll have to get the clerk's guidance on this, is, um, the first time Jason did his presentation, uh, there were a few things, other members of council and myself, I should have mentioned it, that thought we should maybe be red circling or after debate have thought maybe we would, uh, like to take them out. Um, um, so if we went back to them, is, is that something counsel wants to do? I don't think, I think I'm, I've had other council members come up to me and, and say they wanted to go back and, and look. So if we, um...
Do you want to start with tab 11? Like, do you want to go through each one?
Yes, okay, tab 11 then, okay.
That's the IT one.
Okay. So, yeah, this is, yeah, so this is the IT one, tab 11. Um, how, any comments on those?
Through you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
The first item, the annual equipment, um, I think there was some discussion about the possible, um, opportunity to defer the annual equipment.
Oh, so that's right at the top?
That's the $32,000.
Yes, I see. Yes.
So, so in response to that, I mean, these are computers that are four or five years old. So they're on a cycle. This is part of the renewal cycle. So if we defer another year, we're going to have the chance of some computers being really old. So that's...
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
When I was talk, through you, Mr. Mayor, when I was talking to Mike and going over all these items, he's actually just replacing hard drives and doing other things on most of these old computers. He's not even replacing the computers. That's, that's what he mentioned to me. We're not even replacing the old stuff. We're just putting in new parts.
Okay. Uh, yeah, anything else on that? I sort of look at the backup generator, but then, um, probably a good thing to have a backup on your IT. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I've got a, okay, I'll take the question about the backup generator. I, I know it's an important thing. Um, I was just wondering, it's got 46,000 dollars for it. Is, is there been a quote on that or is that just, um, somebody thought it might cost?
No, he would have got an estimate for it.
Okay.
Okay. Um, let's, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Counselor, uh, Trophy?
Yeah. Do we, we went through this whole budget. We, we know the condition that we're in now and more and more, I says, we're learning. And money is, seems to be the problem of everything. This budget here, it has to be reduced by 7 to 10%. There is no money.
Okay, so, so you raised a statement, so show us how we're going to do it.
Well, we have good staff here. They're going to have to go through this because we can't just keep, the region's taxes are going to be going up. 5% they're talking, okay? Uh, we have some, the arena sales, if that sale goes through, that's going to take care of past projects that are started. We can't just keep increasing these taxes through the, uh, capital budget that we're going to approve, the operating budget. Uh, we see the reserves where they're going to be in 2020. We need to go through this and make the decisions. That's why we have to rely on, uh, top staff here's expertise.
Well, if I can interrupt, staff, these are staff recommendations. So they've already had their meetings.
Correct.
We cut, yeah, we cut 4 million dollars already.
And they've already cut 4 million off. So now it's up to us to say, okay, we don't agree with this and make additional cuts. But staff is already, this is what staff has brought to us. So we don't, we don't take it back to them and, and, and give them direction. It's now in our court. So it's one thing to say, yes, we have to knock off 700,000. Show me where it is. And this is, that's why we're, that's why we get paid the big bucks.
So appendix two is the list of things that we deferred. And that's almost 4 million dollars.
Uh, Counselor?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So I look at the next two items and, um, I understand security awareness is important for IT. Um, however, for 15,000 dollars, um, to talk about end user training, to talk about how important it is, seems like something that in the dire situation we're in, could be bumped to an, another time where we actually have more money. As well as the, um, next item, which is 9,000, but hey, 9,000 is 9,000. And that's having, um, software to provide single sign-in. That's very, it's a convenience. It's a nice to have. But I think it's more of a nice to have than a have to have. So I would look at those two items of 15,000 and 9,000, and I would defer both of those.
Well, unfortunately, we don't have Mike, the IT guy, to, uh, to guide us in here.
So the only thing with the, um, they're, they're both security related.
Yes.
The first, the first 15,000 is training. And I think that one we probably could defer. Uh, the second one, the 9,000, for the single access sign-in, it, it helps with eliminating all the different passwords that people have to have and the risk of, um, of having those passwords breached. Breached, yeah. So maybe we can take those two off and the 9,000 can come out of the Innovation Fund. He could, he could fund it out of there if it's that important. So we'll, we'll take those two out.
Okay. Okay.
Saying 0219, we're taking out?
The 15,000 and the 9,000. So 19 and 0219 and 0319.
So next then is flip it over, ready? Yeah, 12. Now, we've already approved the 300,000 for the radio system, uh, which was a safety thing. The chief is here. Chief, uh, is there a?
12.
Is there a health and safety? Is there any way we can be, uh, put off the 15 for the, uh, scuba mask or SCBA mask? Or is that pretty needed by the, by the guys?
Mr. Mayor, that is definitely needed. We're short. Now, we've had, we get equipment damage, it fires and malfunctions and needs to be replaced. So that's essential to equip everybody with a proper mask.
Okay, great. Nope, that's all we need. Thank you. So then, that's fire. Yep, back to 13 then, yes. Okay. Yep.
You have Counselor Hall?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. So the second item, and I know we talked a little bit about this, was the old Pelham Town Hall fixture maintenance. So we talked about replacing light bulbs before they're burnt out for 4,500 dollars. So perhaps that's something that we can...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes. Okay, down to the third one. Yes, I got to, uh, I got to agree with you on that, that, uh, if the light bulb's already good, uh, I, I think we should, uh, council, uh, agree we should defer that?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Have you seen 0219? I heard I've done my part, guys. Look at that, 23 to 45, it's 26,000 dollars.
And we did talk about the Thice Road well replacement. Ryan, I see you do have 30. Hopefully, uh, what, what are you guys doing for water now? Is that, are you trucking water in or how are you guys managing?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. The well is still operating somewhat. Uh, we are getting a lot of, like, a lot of sand and material through it. It's clogging up the filters for the UV treatment system.
Yes, okay, great. So, so hopefully that 30,000 is, is hopefully way high. If you, how, how deep did you say that well was? 120?
I think so. I wasn't the one that dealt with the, in the quote, but we did have, uh, global malcony.
Okay, okay. Well, obviously, I don't think we can, go ahead, Counselor Trophy?
Oh, so after you're done the well thing?
No, I'm done the well thing.
Okay, so I'm thinking, uh, possibly the MCC gym floor covering for 30,000?
Yes.
Defer for a year until we get some more?
Yeah, I think we're all okay with that. Yes, yes. And then the arches, we're going to have a meeting on that, the, the arches.
Prior, prior to, to?
Yeah, before anything happens. Yep.
And, and through you, Mr. Mayor, we, we talked about one of those funds. I can't remember the name of it, that community something, something fund that maybe we could use towards the arches, the, um, downtown fund or something, maybe?
Okay, so then, 14, I guess. I gotta admit, I was looking at one other one and I don't see it right now. And, uh, and I, and it was the, um, one for doing the, um, it was 7,500 dollars to do the monuments. We were going to get a estimate in to clean that. I wonder before we approve that, I, I mean, I don't want to, uh, do any harm. But I'm wondering if we can get, um, perhaps Kirk Patrick's to take a drive around and, and have their professional opinion as to whether we need that done or not. I wonder if we could get that done. I think we could do that, Jason?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
We can have our manager of facilities definitely look into that and,
Yeah, okay.
and see if we can get by one more year without doing that portion of it.
Great, thank you very much. Because I know the one by the Old Town Hall, it's in great shape yet, but I don't know about the ones, uh, around the town here.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, again, this was a, this is a program that was done every two years to make sure that we maintain those monuments.
Yes, yes.
Um, so I can't speak, uh, to the point where, you know, whether or not we can defer that for a year.
Yes.
But definitely, that's something we can look at.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, so then would that one be red circled?
Yes, let's red circle until we hear different then.
I just need to know the difference between differring it.
Yes.
I need to keep this straight, whether we're differring it, red circling it, or removing it.
Well, let's red circle it for now.
So we're red circling?
Are all these red circled then?
Yes, yes.
I have those as removed.
Yes, removed.
Which, which is red circles right now?
No.
Okay.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. I have RDO 919 roadside ditching program removed. IT 0219, security awareness. IT OT, IT 0319, identity access management. FAC 0219, OPTH light fixtures. FAC 0519, MCC floor covering as removed from the 2019 capital budget. What I have so far is red circled from the last meeting is FAC 0719, Pelham Town Square arches. Red circle until a determination on whether to keep or replace the arches is made.
Yep, great.
Okay, so I'm then red circling the Centennial Tap, or 0319, Centennial Tap maintenance.
Yes.
Red circling.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The RK.
Have we reached 2 million yet?
We keep going, we'll get it.
Uh, Counselor?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. And I just, just going back to the item before this, we talked about the, um, gym floor covering. I remember when, um, Kim made a presentation to us about, uh, some of the revenue opportunities. And I believe, if I recall correctly, she had alluded to the fact that she wasn't going to be taking any additional bookings until a decision was made on the floor. So now that we've made a decision on the floor for this year, I'm hoping that we can continue taking bookings and using the temporary measure of what we've been using, I guess, for floor covering, um, which was paper or what have you because we need that revenue. So we can't just say no, no to anymore. That would be silly.
No, but at the same time, you have to weigh that, the, the 30,000 against, maybe you're going to book that out maybe three or four times a year. It didn't make a lot of business sense, I didn't think.
No, what I'm, what I'm suggesting...
But you're right. I'm sorry, uh, Director has something, but if I can cut you off?
Sure, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so we do have, uh, a product that we've used for the Silver Stick Tournament to protect that flooring. Right now, it's, uh, we're looking at probably getting two to three uses out of that, depending on what the weather is like when we, we use that system. So for the bookings that we have for this year, we can obviously use that same system, uh, to protect the floors. Uh, moving forward then, future years, we'd have to take a look at, uh, how we would, um, protect those floors with future bookings.
Okay, appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, Counselor?
Oh, no, that's, that's fine. Through you, I just wanted, I just wanted to ensure that we're going to move ahead with bookings now as opposed to being in this holding pattern.
Thank you. I believe now we're going to, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, guys. I'm, I'm looking at the other side. Go ahead, Counselor.
That's because Counselor Cora is over there.
Yeah.
Dugout and bullpen enclosures.
Oh, yeah, that's another thing. Yeah. Well discussed. So who, uh?
What was it?
Uh, the, uh, the protection at the dugouts on the Ball Diamonds, 12,005. Oh, yeah, uh, Centennial Diamond 3 and Diamond 2, uh, the bullpen enclosures.
So those diamonds have been around like for years without me. So I don't see any reason why we couldn't defer it for a year.
Okay, okay. Okay, so I'll probably defer them for a year then. Okay, okay, yeah, all right. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I know this is a request that's come through from our, uh, from our, our Pelham Minor Baseball, our, our user. So obviously, if this is a decision to, to put this off, I mean, the, exactly, the parks have been operating, uh, for several years. And I mean, this is something that we could probably look at defer for a year.
Great, good, good. Thank you for that. Excellent. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Counselor Stewart?
I'm back to the, um, gymnasium floor covering. Was that quote for, like, both gymnasiums or just one?
Uh, yes, through you, Mr. Mayor, that was for both gymnasiums, correct? And, um, it was about four thousand dollars that we spent on that protective covering. And we're expecting, we were, it actually held up better than what we had expected. Uh, and that was an event that took place during, uh, the winter months, so we, and, and with, uh, with a lot of kids running around on the floor. So, um, we are not sure how many uses we'll get out of that, but we're expecting to get at least, uh, two or three.
Okay, but it was the entire gymnasium space?
It was the entire gymnasium and, um, the one thing I can tell you about the system that we did buy, uh, is, it is very labor intensive to, to, to place and to remove. So, um, that's another consideration as well. Moving in, moving, uh, forward in the future to, to use that system, uh, solely and, and for those, uh, for those events, um, it is very labor intensive to install and remove.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, so we now at this diseased, is that where we are now, right here? Disease tree removals? I believe so.
Yeah, you're in, uh, number, number fourteen, Schedule fourteen.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm there. Oh, okay, so here we go, okay. Yeah, ah, there we go, yes. Yeah, so we got, uh, we got the tree removal, which I don't think, uh, um, my own opinion is I, I don't think we should touch that, just for liability reasons. I'm sorry. Uh, any, uh, so the Centennial Park Electric Sign, myself, I, I, I hope we can leave that in. Uh, the Lions, Fenwick Lions, they do, uh, so much for, uh, not just Fenwick, but all of, on here, all of Pelham. They, they run how many parades? Um, my son, I realize it's thirteen thousand and we've been cutting everybody else, but, uh, myself, um, I would vote to, uh, I would like to see that stay in there. Yes, that, Councilor Hill.
When, our last discussion, we talked a lot of, of, uh, an item that's coming up, the Steve Bauer Trail, and there were signs involved with that as an option. And I thought we're gonna take a look and see whether that sign at, uh, Fenwick could qualify as part of those signs.
Oh, is that, yeah, maybe. Do you mean, uh, Director of Public, or who is that? Oh, I'm sorry, this one. Vicki, or, uh, Ms. Van Neven's one? Do you remember that?
Um, through you, Mr. Mayor, that could be a stretch, but, uh, to use that, the money for the trail, I don't believe it would qualify.
We're looking for stretches.
I know, I know. It's, that would be a real stretch to, um, have
Something that'd be on there books.
We could talk about the trail use maybe on the, um,
There you go, now you're talking.
Okay, thank you, Paul.
Sorry, yes, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, to use the monies that came with that grant, there were speci- four specific projects that were identified as part of that grant. Um, so to go outside of that, uh, um, isn't gonna be successful.
No.
It, it's, the grant is, uh, um, the purpose of the grant is to support active transportation in the community.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that clarity. Thanks. So anything, uh, we then we talked about the Centatask Maintenance and Conservation and, and then first of all, is, is council okay if we leave this, uh, uh, the Centennial Park Electric Sign in? I, I mean, that's what I feel. How, how does the rest of the council feel on that? Yeah, okay, okay, thank you. Uh, and then the, the dugouts, we deferred, and then the Centennial Park Electrical Upgrades. Uh, required for the safety of the facility's users and to reduce the cost of emergency repairs. Circuits overloaded pose a potential health and safety risk.
Keep it.
Um, yeah, well, myself, I, I think we, we, we leave it. What's the rest of the council think on that? Yeah, health and safety thing, great. Uh, so then, uh, this is just all of them back, so now we go over to, uh, fifteen. Path Street, yeah, let's not, let's put Path off. I did not say that.
You have a few witnesses in the room.
Okay, so down the road a ways, um, I'm sorry, anybody got some, uh, council trophy?
Well, we got engineering there, uh, oh four dash nineteen, third-party consulting assistance in traffic counts and road monitoring. Uh, maintenance and surveying and innovations in support of twenty thousand dollars.
Yes. Um, Director of Public Works.
Uh, yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my recommendation would be to keep this in. Our annual budget for this is usually thirty thousand. Uh, we dropped it to twenty. So the, the, um, the direction that we got a staff from council to go ahead and do, uh, traffic studies and, and look into our pedestrian crosswalks, uh, those type of, uh, traffic, uh, safety-related studies that we do, we don't do in-house. So we have to go outside to get those services completed. Um, one of the other directions from council, uh, is to look at, uh, doing some traffic studies and traffic counts at Station Road and Summersides, uh, intersection to see if a traffic signal or char- sorry, if a four-way traffic stops warranted. Um, so that's the type of engineering assignments that, uh, that, that work, that, that account would, uh, would fund.
Uh, Council, uh, Councilor on.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, when it comes to studies on roads that are regional roads, can we not, I'm looking for some money. Can we not hit up the region for some funding for, or use their engineers for traffic studies that are on their roads that are in our community?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, we wouldn't do any, uh, any studies on, uh, regional roads per se. Um, the, the stuff that we're looking at, uh, as part of that, uh, uh, safety reviews are, are, those signals are on Pelham Street. They're, they're a town, uh, road. Anything that was related to the regional road, um, yeah, we would ask them to take direction and, and, and do the appropriate studies. But, um, yeah, a lot of, a lot of the work that we find out of that account would be for municipal purposes strictly.
Thank you. And we're looking into, uh, RDE oh five nineteen, the Steve Bauer Trail paving. We were doing, uh, we were looking at that. What, what did we decide on that? I forget. That was a grant, right? Oh, yeah, a grant of seventy-five thousand?
But we had until December thirty-first next year, two thousand and twenty, to do something with that money, so we didn't have to do it this year.
Okay.
And there was four different projects that we
Okay, so that's, okay, great.
Didn't have to be the paving of the trail.
Yeah.
Plus with the paving of the trail, we said that there would be maintenance issues going forward that we would have to take care of. And in addition to that, we would have an additional one point five kilometers of snow removal that we would have to do, so.
Yes, okay. Yeah, so we're gonna leave that for now then. Okay. Uh, so where was that? Right there, and then the, uh, condition index study, might rather, the, the base surface repair program, yes. Uh, now, uh, perhaps, uh, Director of, uh, PW, uh, Jason, what is the difference between the, uh, road base and surface repair program for one seventy, and then somewhere along here, there's a four hundred thousand dollar? What, what's the difference between those two, if you could, please?
I guess, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. RDE oh seven nineteen, the road base and surface repair program is basically our passion program.
Ah, okay.
So that'll be out, uh, identifying, uh, deficient areas, uh, areas that are potholed, um, and doing, sometimes you lose the edge of the roadway. Starts to slough off, becomes a safety issue. Um, so this is a program where, uh, we go around and do small miscellaneous patches around the town.
Okay.
The other, the other program, which it would be RD twelve nineteen, that's our, uh, annual road resurfacing program. And that's, uh, that's geared towards larger sections of road, um, such as would be well and, well and road between Haste and, and, uh, wherever the limit would be where we would prepare. It's more of a full road type of either asphalt, hot mix paving, or sometimes it would be surface treatment, uh, uh, road reinstatement, depending on what the, what the surface is.
Great, thank you. Um, do you, do you know, I, so let's leave, if we were to leave that one of the, uh, and we went down to the four hundred thousand, uh, the pancake effing him. And I realize that, uh, I'm, everybody here knows what the condition of the roads are. What would, uh, what would council think if we, uh, if we eliminated everything except well and road? That, that's what I'm thinking, but what does the rest of council think about that?
Did, we are receiving a grant of a hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, are we really? I missed that. Oh, yeah, okay, yes. Okay, yeah, yeah, okay. Well, is there any money to be saved there, uh, council, or, or are we happy? I mean, God and goodness knows that, uh, uh, what kind of shape the roads are. So it's, it's whatever. Yes, uh, Councilor Trophy?
Yeah, I think during the presentation night, we talked about roadside ditching, and I wasn't sure what was the conclusion of that. Did we?
So you, that's just, um, to get that grade off.
I know, I know, but there was something we asked if we can move that forward, didn't we, or?
Yes.
Okay.
It's off, it's off.
I'm gonna make my own notes here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, uh, so no one else is speaking on the, uh, on the four hundred, uh, and like I say, we got one eighty-three grant. Okay, good. Uh, sulfur spring drive, that's, uh, we'll see how things roll on that, I guess. Between closed for, uh,
That's gotta go.
Yes. Okay, la di da, and then, uh, anybody see, uh, anything else? Turn the page there. Yeah, that's on Schedule, uh, oh, that's one. Yeah, yeah, okay. So then if we go, uh, flip the couple pages and we go to Schedule sixteen and, uh, proposed capital budget summary. So that just, oh, um, as much as I love the guys down in Thice Road, uh, I think we should defer the, uh, four-by-four patrol and response truck. Uh, and that's my own opinion, whatever, uh, council thinks.
But if we're doing that, why can't we, and I know it's not part of it, if, if, it's not part of capital budget, why is it in here then? The building inspector vehicle. Doesn't give us a date, doesn't give us mileage, but you're asking us to spend forty thousand dollars.
But it's being funded by the building, the building department reserve fund, it's not being funded by
But, so why do we put it in here?
Well, because we have to balance everything. It's, it's still, it's still in our budget.
So I'd like to hear.
Why can't I get that?
So what does council, uh, I don't wanna be the only bad guy here. What does council think of the four-by-four patrol and response truck? Yes, Lisa?
Well
Uh, Councilor on.
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so often I see, and I, and I don't know what the purpose is, there's a vehicle that often sits in this yard here, and it, I think it's an SUV, I don't know if it has four-by-four or not, but is it possible that, that the four-by-four response truck and that vehicle that often sits in our parking lot can, that, that can be used, like, until we have the money to, to do the new purchase?
I don't know.
Because, I, I, yeah, I don't know who I should be asking that question to, but, um, I don't know if it's, cause if it's a, if it's a building, um, inspection type of use, then we know those in advance. So it's a scheduled, it's a nine-to-five type thing, and those are usually in appointment. So, um, where's the response vehicle if need be, can, can, that could be used, double up?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the, I believe the, the vehicles that we have here at Town Hall, there's a, there's a, a light-duty pickup truck which is used for our engineering staff, as well as a, as a, a small SUV that's used for the engineering staff. From a, uh, building department side, I believe we have two?
Two SUVs and a little, the Ford Ranger, small pickup truck.
Correct. Um, I think the, um, the request for the four-by-four, um, is to replace a, a vehicle that's, um, that's outdated, it's, it's, I don't have the notes in front of me, I believe the one it's replacing has about three hundred thousand kilometers on it, uh, currently. Um, and these are, the, the, the purpose of this vehicle is, A, A, we need to replace, uh, the, the pickup truck that we're using to do our patrols. And, um, as you can appreciate, the guys are, um, driving the roads before the plows get out and, 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 uh, they're, they're out doing the patrols, uh, checking the weather, making sure, and these, these are the people responsible for, uh, making sure that, um, when we have our call-outs, that we're meeting the minimum maintenance standards, so, um, the bottom line is, it's a four-by-four, yes, but why do we need the four-by-four? Because it's, it's something that, uh, we feel is, is an added safety measure for those guys around the roads. And to be honest with you, it's, that truck's, uh, in the budget this year to replace a truck that's, uh, got three hundred thousand kilometers on it currently. So, um, I mean, one thing I like to say is, uh, when you're, when you're considering the items in the budget here, just, we're not, you know, the, these, these get deferred and get pushed into subsequent years, so, um, I know it makes, it's, it's tough right now to try to, um, look at what, what to push off, but everything that gets pushed off will be, uh, included in, in the future forecast, right?
Yeah.
Well, further to that, so, so I guess the point that I was, that I was trying to make was that if it's, if the weather's so bad, we're probably not going out and doing our building inspection necessarily, that we had have been booked, and if that's the case, then why wouldn't we be able to use the vehicle that's sitting in the parking lot here that might be a four-by-four if we need it? Like, in other words, make it, make it work for us as opposed to sit in a, in a parking lot unused.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to defer that question to our Director of, of Planning with respect to the operation of, uh, her staff and, and how that works with the building inspections.
Yeah, certainly building inspectors are out, uh, inspecting throughout the day, um, and, uh, they come in for lunch and then they're back out again. So the vehicles are, are, are out on the road and, and, um, doing, doing that work, um. They're not four-by-fours either, so they're not something that they could be transferred or used for other purposes. Um, they're light-duty SUVs and then the very decrepit Ford Ranger truck.
Okay, so they don't have four-by-four, cause some do, SUVs, so.
No, they don't.
Okay.
Councilman Hill.
Through you, Mr.
Oh, wait, I gotta do this. We're gonna curfew. So, uh, we gotta do this. So a motion put forward by, uh, Councilor Wink, uh, that the rules of procedure as contained in the Town of Pelham procedural bylaw be suspended and that the specified meeting curfew time of ten PM be and is hereby waived. And that the remainder of the business listed on the agenda for this meeting continue to be considered until, or, well, so it's up to council. Either all matters have been concluded, or we set a time of ten-thirty and possibly have a special meeting during the week.
I would say go to ten-thirty because we've got, I think, ten-thirty will finish this, but then we've got some other items that have been deferred also that we're not gonna be able to get through.
So, uh, madam, uh, CEO, is that, is that okay? Cause I know
Yeah.
Yeah, you're okay with that? Okay, so, uh, council good at ten-thirty? Okay.
Yeah, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, so, so, or, so, um, so I'll read that again. It's, and that the remainder of the business listed on the agenda for this meeting continue to be considered until, uh, a set time of ten-thirty PM.
Or until all matters are concluded, like, if we finish at quarter after, we don't have to do something.
Oh, no, okay, I see, yes, yes. Yes, all matters have been concluded or until a set time of ten-thirty.
First, first.
Yeah, so, uh, on the motion, all in favor? Great, and all opposed? Just me? Defer, carry. Thank you, fam, and, uh, Council, Councilor Hill.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilor Cora on the building inspector vehicle. Even though we're getting the money from somewhere else, I still think it's money in the town's coffers, so I won't agree with that, nor the purchase of that four-by-four.
And I'm, so what was the last part?
The purchase of the four-by-four.
Yeah. Did you, um, did you want that or not?
No.
No, defer it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, uh, Councilman Stewart?
Um, yeah, the four-by-four, um, from the sounds of it, it's used primarily in the winter. So how about we struggle through with what we have for the remainder of this winter and possibly lease one for the five months of next winter and see what we could do after that?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, if we're, uh, choosing a lease over a purchase, um, I may defer this to, to, uh, our acting CEO, but, uh, my understanding is that we would have to have that money included as part of the as part of the twenty nineteen capital budget.
No, um, I just mean a short-term lease for next, just for the five months of next winter.
Well, that's costly.
Sorry, uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. If I can, I would like uh, my manager to speak on this.
Of course.
This, this vehicle isn't just used in the wintertime, it's used throughout the year. It's a road patrol, but I can speak a little bit about, or may, about fleet pooling. Fleet pooling only works when people start and stop in the same location. Tyce Rover already pooling fleet. Uh, not one supervisor has an assigned vehicle. Um, some days it is difficult just to find a vehicle to drive around. I actually do tend to use my own as a manager, uh, to drive back and forth to town hall already. But we really don't have vehicles for all the staff all the time we need them. So we are already stretched, it's already a pinch. The four by four for the road patrolling is replacing a truck that was bought in two thousand and three. The dashboard is no longer working, it died at two hundred and sixty thousand kilometers. We're assuming that we've put on forty thousand kilometers in the last two years. This is what we're driving around, and it is not reliable. Uh, we start vehicles in the morning trying to get out to drainage issues, flooding, water main breaks, winter patrols, and things don't work. And that's where we're at. So that's why when we ask for a vehicle, we do it because there's other reasons. It's not just because I wanna do four by four, or I don't think we need one. It's, it's, it's there for a, a real need.
Thank you. Any, any questions, Ryan?
So, based on that comment, I would say that we replace the vehicle.
Oh, I'm sorry?
We replace the vehicle.
Yeah. Uh, I must say, I, I've changed my mind, and Ryan, you're a heck of a salesman.
Have to be.
Yes, it's a, it's a tough council here today. Uh, how does the rest of council feel? Okay, you're good. Uh, councillor Cory?
Yeah, I'm fine. As long as we can lose one vehicle. Guess I'm not gonna get that.
Okay, so the uh,
Gets a four by four.
That the four by four stays, okay. Now, oh, so we, okay, so you guys want the, the building inspector vehicle. Um, uh, how does council, the rest, we know uh, how two people feel about it. Myself, if I was to vote on it, I would say uh, it's not coming out of the levies. And there's a million dollars in the uh, building, uh, building, all the, building inspecting fund, uh, so myself, and we have heard that the truck's in rough shape. So myself, I would, I say replace it. Uh, councillor.
It doesn't come out of the tax levy, it's, it's funded through the building reserve.
Yes. You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Councillor Wink?
Yep.
Yeah, and myself.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, it's coming out of the operating cost then?
No, it comes out of the building levy uh, fund, which is.
The, the building department reserve.
Yeah, the building part.
So the revenues that are generated from the building department, they pay for their staff.
But is that an operating budget, or is it? So it's obviously not a.
Well, it's in the operating budget, but it has to balance out to zero. So whatever money is collected, less expenses, the, the, the funds are transferred to a reserve. It can only be spent on building items, on the building department. It can't be spent on anything else.
Okay. Councillor Hon? Councillor Mark, huh, okay. Truck stays then. Two trucks stay. We gave the uh, GM boys two minutes of work. Okay.
fleet uses Ford.
Uh, where are we here then?
Seventeen.
Oh yeah, so now we go to schedule seventeen. There we go. Uh, description, mountain lifting device, oh, mountain, monument lifting device, health and safety.
It's fine.
Uh, what, what's council think on that?
Keep it in.
Okay, keep it in? Okay, bike?
No.
Post capital budget, so on schedule eighteen now. Design church street upgrade.
It's a good thing.
Any of those, uh, what do we got here, water reserve? Well, they're coming out of the water, oh, well, yeah, water reserves. Any of our, any things, anybody wanna touch, or are we, we good? I don't know, that, um, Jason, or, I'm sorry, director of public works, uh, a biggie there, the CCTV. Is there any way we can uh, uh, I just happened, I know that next year is gonna be, for a lot of reasons, is gonna be a lot different than this year. Uh, and that's all we can say. Maybe it's being optimistic on my part. Is, is there any way, uh, what do you think of, uh, of putting that back a year? The CCTV? What's the story?
Uh, through you, Mr. Mayor. Like I said in my presentation, um, I think it's important to have a, a, a good handle on what your assets are and the condition. That being said, I think uh, we've got kind of a game plan in place to um, at least have one look at all of our system every uh, three to five years. Um, so um, I believe that there's probably some opportunities to reduce the amount uh, for next year's capital budget. I wouldn't suggest eliminating it completely, cause I'd like to maintain that five-year as a minimum program of looking at all our, all our assets and, and getting that information back so that we know the condition.
Yes.
So through you, Mr. Mayor, if there's a reduction, like, how much would you think? Twenty percent, twenty-five percent?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll be one hundred percent honest, the um, this hundred fifteen thousand for the CCTV program, it also includes flushing. Um, I'm not sure how much of the system that will, that will accommodate. I know this is an annual program that we've, we've put in. I'll uh, ask my manager, does any?
Ryan, remember, you got the truck. You got the truck. No, no, honest, we need an honest answer.
I would, yeah. Sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna throw back, Jason, I'm not really too sure what that, what that, what that mixes between flushing and cammering. The flushing is something I wouldn't wanna give up, the cammering. You still don't want to, we're gonna have to do it.
Yes.
Just kicking the can, right? Flushing is not something you wanna.
No, I realize that's a vital, that's a vital thing, yes.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I would recommend uh, as initial stage to, to take fifty percent of that for this year.
Okay, excellent, thank you, I appreciate that. Anything else on that, or are we heading over to nineteen? Twenty nineteen capital budget summary again. So uh, East Street, Ronald Low Beckett.
Schedule nineteen, I think um, staff have put the fear of God on us.
Yes.
In us with respect to our responsibility on water.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, exactly.
I wouldn't wanna see any cutback on that.
No, I, I, I agree with you there, councillor. Uh, anything from, uh, from you guys on, uh, on schedule nineteen? There's a water, uh, there's water, okay. We go to uh, schedule twenty. And we have uh, the uh, twenty and twenty, twenty thousand for East Fenwick and twenty thousand for zoning bylaw. Each of those uh, each of those gotta get done, that's for sure. I know that zoning bylaw, we've been working, that's our, been quite the battle, Barb, uh, director, sorry. Yeah. Oh, so then, by the library, uh, yeah. Technology Service Development, new library acquisitions, ten thousand. One thing you don't wanna get angry is some bookworms.
We'll, we'll blame you, Mr. Low.
And the uh, and the brushing, Swayze Brain Drain. Um, like I say, we pay that, and then we do get it back from the uh, from the, from the drain users. And that's the uh, end of the show. At this time, we would ask councillor Hildebrand to take the pail and uh, try, try to get some money along from the residents there.
The ones that are left, were waiting for too late.
Yeah, the other ones uh, knew what was coming.
She has something further, I think I missed.
Anyone on council have any uh, comments, suggestions? Now is the time to uh, for it, I guess?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I saw, I saw our treasurer with her little pad there, counting on how much money she's received.
I think, I missed the red circle ones, Nancy, are the ones that came off. I'm at two thirty-one.
Red circle is um, project FACO seven nineteen. He counts square arches.
How much is that?
That's four.
Oh, I have that, okay.
And then PRK O three nineteen, Centotaphs. Uh, report on feasibility. One year.
My number, how much is that?
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five. Okay, so I'm missing that one, okay. Two thirty-one. Okay, almost two hundred and forty, two hundred and thirty-nine thousand I have right now.
Excellent.
So divided by a hundred and thirty thousand is one point eight percent.
Okay, excellent. All right. Well, I, I don't, I don't see how we could get that any farther down, uh, that's for sure. I don't know. If anybody has any suggestions, uh, please email me.
Hopefully all those budgets, sorry, through you, Mr. Mayor. Hopefully all those budgets are a little bit on the high end.
Yeah, yes, that, that's true. That could be a, a little bit of leeway.
Like the well and.
Maybe about three percent.
Yeah, something like the well, we could pick a couple thousand up there, yes.
And through you, Mr. Mayor, like, to staff, like, we appreciate how you sharpened your pencils to even get it down to this amount, because there was a lot of cutting that, that you did and, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's not an easy thing to, to cut things out where there's, there's needs. Obviously, these were on the list, they are needs, but um, yeah.
Exactly.
Thank you for, thank staff for all that you've done.
Good point, uh, councillor, yes. I mean, we cut two hundred and some odd thousand, staff went back the second time and cut over four. So you know they uh, did a lot of work. And I, yeah, on behalf of everybody on council, guys, we.
Four million we cut.
Yeah, we really appreciate the work you did.
Yeah, Penix Two has the list that we cut.
Okay, um.
You have a couple of resolutions here.
Oh, okay, uh, we got to do some resolutions. So.
Okay, so if I could just explain to you, I have one to use. So this one, I'm, I'm gonna ask that you read it into the record, but it's going to end up being as amended. But we need to approve these amendments first. We need to add this one into the record first.
So uh, committee, and also I have a, there's still motions.
These are recommendations.
Recommendations, yeah.
And then I have the others for the redlining, red circling divisions and staff directions.
So a recommendation put forward by councillor, councillor Wink, that committee receive the presentation, presentation from the treasurer director of corporate services regarding the twenty nineteen capital budget, and that the twenty nineteen portion of the capital budget be recommended for council approval at the next regular meeting, and that the balance of the five-year projected capital budget be received for information. But, but now we have to amend, pass some amendments. We have to amend the motion.
Right, so the first motion is by councillor Hildebrand for the red circle items, Mayor.
Okay. So the first uh, motion put forward, no, it's not a motion, what is, I'm sorry.
It's a recommendation.
It's a recommendation, I'm sorry. Getting late here. The rec, first recommendation put forward by councillor, councillor Hildebrand, that committee of the whole recommend the council red circles the following capital projects. Red circle items. Project FAC dash O seven dash one nine, Palom Town Square Arches. Red circle until a determination on whether to keep or replace the arches as made by council. And uh, O three, one, uh, dash one nine, Centotaphs. We report on feasibility of postponing maintenance for one year, uh, seventy-five hundred dollars. Any debate on these amendments? Okay, so um, so we vote on the amendments, all in favor of these amendments? Excellent, most of amendment carries.
You have another amendment, two more amendments.
And we have two more amendments to go. Um, recommendation, oh, not put forward.
We need a mover on this one. So we need a mover on this one.
I need a mover on this one. Okay, councillor, councillor Hildebrand, thank you. Okay. Um, that the, so the recommendation is that the following project, projects be removed from the twenty nineteen capital budget. O nine dash one nine, roadside ditching program, hundred thousand dollars. O two dash one nine, security awareness, that's in the IT department. O three dash one nine, identity access management, uh, nine thousand dollars, again, IT. Uh, O two dash one nine, old, old town hall, old Palom Town Hall light fixtures, thirty-five hundred dollars. O five dash one nine, MCC four covering gymnasium, defer one year, thirty thousand dollars. O four nineteen, um, number, oh, um, Centennial Number Three dugout protection, twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand five, defer one year. Uh, O four dash one nine, reduced by fifty percent. This is hopefully CCTV and flushing, fifty-four thousand five hundred. Um, any discussion on this amendment? All in favor of this amendment? Amendment, oh, anyone against it? Nope, good.
Fifty-seven thousand five hundred, it's half the way.
Okay, thank you.
So uh, great, we have one more amendment, oh, maybe we got more. A recommendation put forward by councillor Han, that the following staff directions be approved. Staff directions, project, project O seven dash one nine, Palom Town Arches. That staff be directed to be, prepare a report outlining the options and cost implications to remove, replace, or repair the arches. Uh, project RD O five one nine. But I thought we, uh, I didn't think we'd have any uh, direction to staff until the council met to decide what we were gonna do with them. Because here we're directing them to prepare a report.
On what your options are, and then that's, that's what will inform council's decision on what to do with them.
Okay, sorry. Continue. Uh, project RD O five one nine, Steve Bauer Trail Grant Project. That staff be directed to report back to committee on alternatives permitted through this grant to include, but not be limited to trail signage. And then project RD O eight one nine, uh, report back on feasibility of a three-way stop and traffic calming options for Palom Street and Hurricane Road. Any discussion on the amendment? Um, vote on the, all for the amendment? Great, nobody's against, thank you. Amendment carries.
Now you have the main motion as amended.
Okay. So now, wait, so uh, how do I read that? Thank you. Um, recommendation put forward by councillor Wink, that committee receive the presentation from the treasurer director of corporate services regarding the twenty nineteen capital budget, and that the twenty nineteen portion of the capital budget as amended be recommended for council approval at the next regular meeting, and that the balance of the five-year projected capital budget be received for information. Any discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment? And nobody opposes, and this passes. Actually, it's carries. All right, this is the one we wanted. Recommendation by councillor Stewart, that this regular meeting of committee be adjourned until the next regular meeting scheduled for March the fourth uh, twenty nineteen, following council. The Hallelujah?
That's my initial.
Oh, okay, okay, meeting over.
He got the question.
Oh, I'm sorry, hang on, yeah. Uh, all those in favor of this motion? All those opposed? Excellent, motion carries, this meeting is amended, is amended, is adjourned.